Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us in everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance, implying, the United States of America and true republic, which stands, one nation, under God, in the love of every justice.
Thank you. You may be seated. Full clerk, please call the roll. Counselor Newman. Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Millenozzo.
Here.
Eight present. All right, just want to do the acceptance of the minutes. We have the minutes of the zoning subcommittee of January 15th and the city council meeting of January 15th. Need a motion to accept and place in file by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Counselor Mercier, do you have a request?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, at this time, suspend the rules to allow a motion 9.1 be brought forward because I know that the majority of these young students are eager to go to school tomorrow and they need their rest. So, I don't want to board them by keeping them here all night long.
Second by Counselor Cirillo. Thank you. And Counselor Elliott, do you also want to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under suspension, if I could ask the members of the animal advisory committee to speak and give a report on the status of their initiative.
Okay. Counselor Mercier.
I think we have a registered speaker.
Okay. Summer Graham.
Oh, boy. Hi. Just for the record, I am not the speaker. Shane always did the speaking, so. The No Bully Zone Kids is pleased to be here tonight to speak.
Addressed Allen, for the record.
Oh, okay. Summer Graham, 22 Street. Sorry. Okay, start again. The No Bully Zone Kids is pleased to be here tonight to speak about a growing problem amongst our students in Lowell, which is bullying. In the next seven minutes, a child in the U.S. will be bullied. This hits home for me, so. It may be the son or daughter of someone you know, or it may be your own child. Only four in 100 adults will intervene, and only 11 percent of the children's peers might step up to help. The rest, 85 percent, will do nothing. This actually happened to my son nine years ago on a school bus. Minding his business, he was attacked by a child much older and bigger because he didn't fit in. He was small, reading a book. Kid said, "You're a nerd." Stabbed him in the arm with a roofing nail and then kicked him so hard in the ribs that two hours later at the doctor, he had a boot print. So I said to him, "What do you want to do?" He said, "Mom, everybody on the bus looked the other way." And I said to the bus driver, "You saw what happened to me." And the driver said, "Not my problem." We ended up calling the school, a principal who is no longer a principal in Lowell, thank God. And I said to him, "You know, you know me. I've had kids in your school for years. This is not acceptable. I want to see the video." And he said to me, "Boys will be boys." Wrong answer. I said, "I'll be there tomorrow morning. Make sure you have your coffee." So I went in with my son, and he had the child there. And I looked at the child and I said, "What gave you the right to put your hands on my kid?" I felt like it. "Great, done with you. Let's talk to Mom." Her words were, "I don't effing believe I had to take a day off for this bull." So bullying is something that really hits home with me. My son started this nine years ago. He is now almost 21, and he turned the team over to the team. And all these kids here have been bullied. So the team actually goes out to different schools and performs lectures about bullying, does hands-on things with bullying. We've done Girl Scout troops. We've done Fitchburg State College. So we go all over. So I'm going to go back to what I had actually written. That was towards the end, but. "Bullying in school has been and will continue to be a problem in schools unless a strong approach is taken. To lose even one child because of bullying tells us we are not doing enough and we need change." Does anyone need me to go over what bullying it is? I'm pretty sure most of us have read the school action plan and all know what it is, what to look for. Does anyone want me to go over that? No? Okay. "In May 2010, anti-bullying legislation recommended by Governor Deval Patrick was signed into law and took effect immediately to prevent bullying. The law, although helpful, is not enough. It's not thorough enough in different areas and needs revision. It was meant to be a stepping stone to a bigger plan. This was nine years ago. Lowell needs to be the leader, the leader that we are because of our city and our diversity. And we need to recommend changes before we lose another child." Anna wasn't the first child in Lowell to take her life. She needs to be the last. Okay. "Bullying is prohibited when it creates a hostile environment for the target, it infringes in the rights of the target at school, it substantially disrupts the education process or the orderly operation of a school, thus altering the conditions of the student's education enough to prevent the student from enjoying the benefits of school." And the kids that don't report bullying is because they fear retaliation. And this is where I feel like Lowell should step in and do something. Section B, 5B explicitly prohibits retaliation against the person who reports bullying or gives information during an investigation. The law only says it prohibits it. It doesn't say what will happen if there's retaliation. And I hear this from so many kids. If I tell, they're going to say I did. I'm going to get beat up. I'm going to get in trouble. The kid's going to hit me. I'm going to hit back. I'm going to be the one to get suspended. So because of this loophole in this law, I feel like even in our policy in Lowell that we have, our action plan, we need to focus more on what will happen? What happens if a child reports it? The kids need to feel that they're safe and it's okay to stand up to themselves and that they won't be bullied again. After a child is bullied, here's another loophole. When the incident is reported to the principal, immediate action needs to take place. Every second in a bullied child's life counts. They need to be supported and feel they matter. The parents and students I have spoken to feel they are left hanging. For instance, they're told, "We'll take care of it," but does it really happen? I have a parent that I'm working with whose child in December has been being bullied all year long by this same girl. In December, this girl went after this. ... upset and played a voicemail for me. This girl threatened to send this child home in a body bag. This has been going on since the beginning of school. Our schools are not stepping in where they need to. I told this parent, "You need to notify the police."
Excuse me. You have to come to closure, but just be careful how you describe the situation.
Okay. Well, this is what was told to me in.
Well.
Yeah. Okay.
You have to come to closure.
Pardon?
You have to come to closure.
I have to come to closure. Okay. Some stuff that we came up with that maybe the city could look into. Form an anti-bullying task team to monitor a school's consistency. Designate one day a month, and I know it seems like a lot to have one day a month, where all schools across the region in Lowell have an anti-bullying day. An assembly on a certain day, set guidelines. You know, once a month sounds a lot, but for a child being bullied, that's their savior right there. Am I getting cut off?
You will be shortly.
Huh?
Please try to finish. Please come to a conclusion.
Oh, boy.
Sorry, but.
Okay. Well, I had a whole page. I don't know. Some of our other recommendations, boxes in all classrooms, a bully box, so if someone is being bullied, they can put a thing in there and say, you know, "I'm being bullied." They don't have to put their name, but if they're comfortable, eventually they will. After repeated bullying, change the bully's classroom or schedule. And lastly, something that we thought of, and I know it's a long shot for Lowell, but uniforms. Because a lot of kids, it's because of their economic class, where they're from, their nationality. You know, if they don't wear the coolest clothes, they don't have the trends, they don't have the fashions. You're tapping over there, so I'm done. Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Sorry. This motion was a motion by Counselor Mercier, but I just want to read the motion for you.
Okay.
"Request State Senator and State Representative to revisit the state's bullying policy. Chapter 71, Section 372, amend the section which does not allow the perpetrator's fate to be disclosed to victims' parents." Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say that, Ms. Graham, you may not be a speaker, but you did a tremendous job, and I know that you'd make Shane very proud of your presentation. I'm asking through this motion to revisit the state's bullying policy and see if there is a way to revive it and bring it back to life. I read that a recent CDC, Center for Disease Control, did a survey, and it suggested that a nine years later, the 2010 anti-bullying law is failing. You just heard some of the things that Ms. Graham said, and yes, and we can build all the schools, all the elementary schools, middle schools. And I will tell you that if we have bullying inside these beautiful facilities, what's the point? The point is people should be able to go to school and be safe. Data from the State Department of Education shows that few students are being disciplined for bullying, and I say it's time to save our children. It's time to make the policy stronger and come up with real ways to implement these policies. To the perpetrators of bullying, put forth a program whereby they are assigned to learn how not to be a bully. Drunk drivers need to go to a program and classes, so too should those found to be guilty of bullying. They should go to special bullying classes. I am so tired of tiptoeing around the perpetrators and their rights. I am more concerned about the rights of victims. The school needs to be more accountable to the victims. I understand that a student can report bullying online and in school, but are the students aware of it? Because I wasn't. Politicians at the top ask what needs to change. I say, "Give the victims and their families more voice, more transparency, more information as to what that bully that made your child a victim got in return for their bad deeds." Victims have a right to know if the penalty administered to the bully went along with the pain that was caused to the victim. We must send a message that those that prey on others and torment those a little weaker will be held accountable, and there is no getting out of it. There will be stronger rules, strict punishment. See if that philosophy, our policy implemented, stops that scourge. Sometime ago in this city, we had a devastating happening, and it was graffiti. It was everywhere you went in the city, there was people that mocked buildings. It was awful. It was getting unbelievable, and we couldn't keep up with it. Finally, we implemented a plan. Madam Manager, you remember that. We were not going to take it anymore. We went completely around, and the minute we saw a mark of any sort, it was gone. It was gone, and they couldn't keep up with it. We sent a message. Many years ago, if people went to court and they were given a date to come back, they didn't. And they were issued a warrant, and the warrant was never enforced. And pretty soon, the word spread and said, "Don't bother going. You're not going to get arrested. There's no warrant that they're going to take you up on it." Now, between the police department having three people and the sheriff's office, there are three people from the sheriff's office, there's a warrant apprehension unit. Now the word has spread, "You better go and honor that warrant because they're going to come after you." This is what we need to do. The overall picture is what is the deterrent. "Ooh, you better not be bullying at school. You know you're going to have to go to classes, this, that, and the other." There's none of that. So I really feel bad because I remember the day that my daughter come home every day after school, and she was starving, starving. Said to myself, "I gave her a pretty decent lunch. I don't know why she's starving. I don't mind that she eats, but she's so hungry." So I said, "What is your problem with you being so hungry?" She said, "Oh, I don't want to talk about it." Well, she did talk about it because I made her. "The girl in my class is taking my lunch." I said, "Oh, you swap it, and you don't like what she has that you swap?" She said, "No, I don't eat what she has. She eats hers and mine as well, and I'm hungry." Oh. I didn't call anybody. I took matters in my own hands. I know I shouldn't say it, but I went to the schoolyard and I frightened all you. But you know what? You have to protect your children. That girl, when I get done yelling at her, did not take anything off of my child again. And I'm sorry that sometimes we have to do that, but that's what it's leading to. I'm so sick of the tiptoeing and the victims have no rights, but the bullies and the perpetrators, they have all the rights. For example, if you're going to be, someone's going to invade your house and rob you, the law says you can't do anything about it. You've got to run out the back door. I'll be a son of a gun if I'm going to run out the back door, but that's what the law says, and it's wrong. And it's time we reversed this trend. It's time we get a little tough and we send a message that we won't tolerate this anymore. And I'm sorry, but I had to make this motion because I know what bullying is all about. I was bullied too at one time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cirillo.
Hi, yes. I second this motion because it's such an important motion, and thank you for putting it on. I'm curious as to know if there are any teachings or classes for our teachers in our schools with regards to bullying. Do they go to any classes that teach them how to handle a situation, a bullying situation? Do we have anything like that for our teachers? Is that something that we could find out to? Because I think that not only, I think that it might help to have our teachers know how to handle a bullying situation, not only the students who are being bullied or go to classes or what have you, or the bullies go to classes. I think it's important to have our teachers know, recognize, understand, and follow through with how to help in the best way possible.
Counselor Cirillo.
Thank you.
There are a number of programs. Would you want somebody from the school department to make a presentation of what those programs are like to the city council?
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Subcommittee on it, Subcommittee on Education, either one.
Yeah, that would be great.
Perhaps if you want to make a motion to refer to the Subcommittee on Education, they could speak on it, then it could be addressed.
I would like to do that then, yes. Make a motion to refer, to request that the.
Subcommittee on Education.
Yes. Meet on the trainings for the teachers. That would be greatly appreciated.
We'll have a complete program. There will allow for a complete explanation of all the programs that are in the high school and then what is being, I mean, in the school system and what's being attended to.
Okay. That would be wonderful because I, start at elementary school on up to the high school.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, you and I spent many years down to high school, and we certainly encountered bullying on all different levels. But I will tell you that there are programs in place, and I know guidance counselors go into the classroom on a regular basis and talk about this. Teachers talk to their students constantly about bullying. And also, if you take a look around the schools, you'll see that there's signage all over the place talking about respect and not bullying. And I think that, you know, I congratulate Counselor Mercier for putting this motion on. I think it's extremely important, and I'm certainly happy everyone is here tonight to show their support. And I will say, I applaud you for coming up here and giving that information. It's a shame you only had five minutes. Sometimes people are up here a lot longer than that. So this is an extremely important thing, and I would like to invite you and anyone you want to, to come back. We have the youth subcommittee that I happen to chair, and I would love to listen to what you have to say and the ideas so that we can go from there and do some planning and, I think, make some positive progress. So if we can talk before you leave.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for that. But for the record, she was given seven minutes. We allow everybody five minutes. It's not a shared thing, but it was an important issue, and I allowed some extension, but.
Well, for the record, somebody last week was up there for about 15 to 20 minutes, and this here, as far as I'm concerned, was extremely important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You raise your hand. Could you remind me when that happened?
You can look back.
Yeah, thank you for that. Counselor Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an important motion. Thank you, Counselor Mercier. I agree with Speaker that at minimum, school should enforce the bully policies that they have in place, if they have one. Just have it in the classroom, sign, written, all that, and not stringingly enforce it doesn't mean anything. On paper, doesn't mean anything. You've got to do more, enforce it, so that message sent to the bully and the parent that this is not acceptable in the school system of Lowell. And I like the motions that we want to do it not just in the city, but also statewide policies so that this kind of thing doesn't happen to any children that go to school and trying to learn. Thank you, Counselor Mercier, for the motion.
And thank you. And as you understand, there are a lot of new programs on bullying and what have you that the school system. That's why with Counselor Cirillo's motion, we'll have the school department to present those issues. Counselor Millenozzo.
Thank you. I appreciate the support, both motions, and to thank them for bringing them forward. But at this point, I'd like to thank the speakers who did speak tonight and to also thank the Lowell Sun, Rick Sobie, and his article that was so important that, I guess it was a roundtable actually sponsored by Boston Herald. So I think that, you know, getting this topic out into the community and on the floor of this council is so very important. So again, I want to thank everybody for being here. I'm going to certainly support this, and hopefully at the state level, be able to make the amendments that is being called for in the motion. So, thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Elliott, then Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was here when Shane came the first time, and I want to congratulate him and his organization for continuing the effort. But it's really kind of sad, but necessary that we're talking about this, that, you know, the life of a young woman was taken as a result of bullying. We know it's pervasive. I think the Speaker had some excellent suggestions because those are suggestions for people in this situation, in the classroom. And it's not always in the classroom. It's not always in school grounds that this retaliation takes place. It's, you know, it's systematic abuse of power that bullies have. It's aggressive. It's intentional. But I think some of the suggestions that have been made on the school side are important, but it's being vigilant, and I'm glad to see that the teachers have training that they can take because they need to be able to identify because those that are being bullied don't always want to come forward, and it has such negative effects for some of these students later in life. So I think it's a good motion that they have to be held accountable. I think that's the bottom line, and this should never happen again. It should never come to a situation where someone feels hopeless and helpless, that this is their only way out. So, and it's a complex problem. It's not easily solved, identified, or, you know, a solution because it's, especially now with the texting. The texting is another form of bullying. So I support it, and we have to just, unfortunately, this doesn't go away, and it's being vigilant, and this is another approach to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I just want to thank the speakers for coming down. I think everybody, you did a great job and good show of support. And as Counselor Elliott said, this is a problem that we just have to stay on top of and never give up on it. Just work, work, work at it. The two motions tonight along with Counselor Mercier is a good way to keep the discussion going, and so I'd like to thank everybody that came down again tonight. And I did like Rick Sobie's article in The Sun last week. I called you on that. You did a nice job with that. So, you know, let's just keep talking about this and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank, yes, Counselor Kennedy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend to support the motion. I think that the legislation that Counselor Mercier refers to was in, back in 2010, I think the, I think the legislation was revised in 2014 because it was considered to be not strong enough at that time. So given the recent report that Counselor Mercier referred to, which was also featured in both the Boston Herald and the Lowell Sun, it might be time to revisit that. But I think concurrently with anything that's done at the State House, it would also make sense as, and I think that Counselor Conway and Counselor Cirillo both alluded to this, it would be good probably either, and it can either be a city council subcommittee or a school committee subcommittee, but I really do think that there should be a subcommittee that looks at the policy that's in place now and how that policy is followed throughout the school district, and also if there are any recommendations or other things that we can do to strengthen that policy. I think that the Speaker who came seemed to have a list of several ideas, and some of those sounded like pretty good ideas. And so there might be something that we can do locally without waiting for legislation from the State House that would beef up the policy that we have now around bullying. So if there's no objection by the maker of the motion, I'd just like to offer that as an amendment, or maybe that's already been done, but I do think that that needs to be part of it. I think we should take a look at what we're doing locally right now and see if there are things that we can do locally to strengthen the situation.
Well, to address that issue, I'm talking with the school committee and the superintendent's office about possibly setting up a mayor's commission on this with Counselor Mercier's motion, this time the city council in with the school committee. And I think, you know, there was good presentation tonight. It's an issue, the Lowell Sun article was really something, a change-maker. It really reminded people what's out there, what the problems are, what the issues are, and that has to be addressed. So I'm looking for basically a sunset commission to look at that, the proper people from the school department, city council, and some outside consultants who, you know, are knowledgeable in this area to come up with recommendations for the school system and for legislation or whatever. Would that fit with what you, would you support that?
And I think that's a great idea, Mr. Mayor. Do you expect to create that very soon?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I think that Counselor Kennedy, when he mentioned to have a subcommittee on the educational subcommittee, we can talk about so many of these things and the problems. And obviously, the. And I think that during that subcommittee, we should also invite the SROs, because they come in and they go from school to school and at the high school, and they talk about the bullying on a constant basis. This is one of the chief things that they have to deal with in the course of the day. So I would recommend that in that, the educational subcommittee, Counselor Kennedy, that we do invite the SROs from the schools that certainly can fill in a lot of the things that they're doing too. Very effective.
You're correct. That was the intent of including the SROs with the package that's been developed by the Lowell School System. Is that Counselor Kennedy?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, do you think that we really need a separate commission? Or do you think that one of the subcommittees either run the city council or?
I mean, you have the subcommittee on student affairs and school committee. You have the education subcommittee. But the thing is, just like the opioid, mayor's opioid task force, they've been doing a lot of good work. And I'd like to just have something that has a sunset clause in it, but just addresses this issue. And it's, once given their head, we select the chair, co-chair, to do this, they would have their head to really work and resolve the problem, also present information on, as a need basis, to the city council and the school committee. But I think this could be done in a quick and short period of time. But, I mean, when you have a sunset ruling on it, it just let them address that issue and get the right people into it.
Thank you.
If that's okay with you. Any further discussion?
A lot of schools in Lowell have done really good, but it's consistency. Because out of this group right here, these kids that are all in your Lowell schools, I asked them, I said, you know, what do they do about bullying? And one kid said to me, we have assemblies like monthly and they talk about bullying. Another kid said to me, well, we don't have assemblies, but they talk about it in the classroom sometimes. And the third one looked at me and said, nothing. So I think the key for us being successful in Lowell is consistency across the board. It has to be the same rules for every school. I know we have that plan. I read it online, but we've got to get everybody on board to follow it. And that's what's going to help our students.
That's a valid point, but that's the purpose of having a commission to look at this and discuss.
It is.
These are, a lot of times, some of the answers can be, some of the issues can be addressed simply, but they have to be addressed. Any further discussion? Thank you. Counselor Elliott? Your motion? We have, do you?
Do we vote on it?
Number 1, the animal advisory commission report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have members as the chair of the advisory committee. We haven't met last month, but we have a meeting relative to an initiative that is being put forth by the MSPCA. We have representatives here relative to pit bulls and doing outreach in hotspots areas. So I don't want to steal the thunder, but if, Michael, if you want to come up or a new outreach worker, just describe, you know, where we're at. That's exciting. It's, they get a grant to put this initiative forward, so it's not costing the city any money, but, Michael?
Hi, I'm Mike Kylie from the MSPCA. And just for the record, historically, I've not been good at sticking to five minutes, so I'll do my best. But I wanted to just bring this back up. We have been working hard at the animal advisory level for many years. I think we started this conversation back in 2012, related really to the conversation around pit bulls, but more broadly about dog safety in our communities. And I think in 2017, when a child was killed by two dogs in the city, it really brought that back to the surface. So we've spent a while now thinking about how we might be able to approach this in a different way. The primary way in which we addressed this back in 2012, 2013, was focused on disciplinary action and strengthening laws and regulations. But I think we came to the conclusion, especially after a child perished, that all of the programs we put into place were all reactive programs, that something bad had to happen in order for us to act. And I think our goal here was to figure out how we might be able to act before something bad happens. So we wanted to move to a more proactive state. So with the animal advisory committee, we really focused on how we might focus on the communities that are the most underserved, primarily back central and the acre, where most of the activities seem to be happening. And recognizing that there was an economic component to this, a information sharing component to this, and thinking about all the resources that we have in and around Lowell that are focused on animals and humans that might be able to come together to figure out a way to make our community safer surrounding dog issues. So we put together this, what's called Lowell Partnership for Pets. It is funded by PetSmart charities, and it's going to be operated primarily by the MSPCA in conjunction with Lowell Humane Society, Animal Advisory Committee, Merrimack Valley Food Bank, as well as the community, the Citizens for a Better Acre, as well as the communities in the back central area. So we're focusing energies primarily on those two locations. Allison Bremer, an MSPCA employee, is going to be our community organizer to try to get the word out. She has some information that she can share with the city council if you'd like us to pass that out. But it'll focus on making sure that citizens in Lowell that might not have access, affordable accesses to resources, are going to be able to have those. So it'll offer low-cost spay-neuter programs for both cats and dogs, $10 wellness veterinary visits, subsidized medical care, free pet food and pet care supplies distributed primarily through the Merrimack Valley Food Bank, and transportation for people to get to those resources. And probably most importantly, a free behavior hotline that will address any concerns related to animal safety in the city. So it'll be offering free services to the community that might be having an aggression-related or behavior-related issue surrounding dogs. So primarily, I think this will be a way for us to be able to more proactively interact with the community members that may be having issues around dogs and getting them support to make sure that they have all the resources necessary to have a safe community. So we wanted to certainly welcome any questions that people had. That's kind of the general overview of the program.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you. This is, as Michael mentioned, it's the proactive approach. We've tried enforcement and, you know, and other avenues, but spay and neuter services, it's low cost, and, you know, this is an important element, because we've seen historically in the past, there, you know, lots of breeding going on, whether it's intentional or not. But Michael did mention there were two areas that we're going to be focusing on, that those are kind of hotspots that have been identified through information that our animal control officer provides us. So I think this is, you know, it's a great opportunity to identify and provide assistance to those pet owners in those areas. So Allison, I don't know, do you want to come up and just give us a quick overview on what you're going to do or what you have been doing?
Hi, my name's Allison Bremer, for the record. I just recently started with the MSPCA. I was brought on for this program. I think the MSPCA, as well as these partnering organizations, are extremely excited to provide these services to these sorely underserved communities in Lowell. And I mean, just so far, with some of the minimal outreach I've been able to do, I've had really great response, just working with the food pantries and some of the clients we've already been able to reach are extremely receptive. And I think this help is something that is very much needed and may be a sore topic for some people, but ultimately, I don't know, I think we're really excited about the future and what we're going to be able to offer to residents in your communities. Thank you.
So, I mean, that's, thank you for taking, again, I think Michael mentioned the partners, the Lowell Humane Society and the food pantry, animal control officer, they're doing great work. So what took place with the death of that young child will not happen again. Again, enforcing the ordinances that we can. And so I think that's it. Thank you for the time. You know, there is information that folks can go to MSPCA. You know, we thank PetSmart charities for donating this. We can go out and do that outreach and provide good care and training, and that hotline, I think, is important, that somebody that's having an animal, that has a pet, that is, they need, you know, help on how the behavior issues. I think that's important. So are there any other ways that this, we can get this information out? I mean, we can put it on the city website, but in any event, I'll stop there. It's, I think it's good stuff.
Okay, I think, I just need a motion to accept this, the report of progress, by Counselor Conway? Thank you. You all said, Counselor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If there's no objection, could we also take item 4.4 out of order?
Yes. I need a second to that.
Seconded.
By Counselor Cirillo. All right, we have a communication to appoint Helen Littlefield to the Paulette Memorial Library Board of Trustees. I need a motion to adopt, by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Cirillo. Roll call. Counselor Newell?
Yes.
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 Yes. Congratulations to Ms. Littlefield. Would you like to say something?
I want to thank city manager Donahue for appointing me. I did apply about 10 years ago and was not appointed, so I'm excited to be appointed now. The library's always been a real special part of the city to me, so I'm very happy that I'm going to get to play another role. I've been a friend of the library, and I urge you all to become a friend of the Paulette Memorial Library. It's a support group, but to be a trustee is another level, so I'm excited and grateful that you appointed me.
Thank you for being willing to say it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to say a couple of words on that. I want to, first of all, congratulate Helen Littlefield. We go back many years, and I will say that she's, she was an incredible teacher, and it was all about learning and education and the kids. So I congratulate Madam Manager for picking her. I think that's an excellent pick, and people like this, I think, are what we need, and she's going to do an absolutely fantastic job. Thank you.
Any comments? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next, we have the auditor's business communication fiscal year 19, year-to-date budget report. I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Villanueva, seconded by Counselor Elliott.
Question?
Yes.
If I could, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city auditor. On page, let me just look here. I have two questions, actually. It has to do with the election office, item 162, where the salary and wages temporarily exceeded the budget by 34 percent. It's actually 134 percent year-to-date, which is, you know, half the fiscal year. Were those extra costs as a result of the Secretary of State's office coming in during the last election and those expenses were incurred by the city? Is my question. Either to the solicitor or to the auditor?
Either one.
The, largely, our extra costs were attributable to the recount in general. There was very little of really what the Secretary of State's office had required of the city that amounted to a dollar expenditure. So what we expended, a lot of other communities expended as well, having the recount, hiring the extra people on hand.
Okay, thank you. And just a follow-up question. On the school side of the budget, things look to be in order. I guess my question would just have to do, it's probably a follow-up to Counselor Conway's question of last week relative to, are you seeing anything in the first six months of this fiscal year that causes any concern from the standpoint of the auditor's office on the school side?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, I mean, at this point, they're basically staying the course right now, is what they expected. And I know that their interim CFO has been very diligent trying to identify all her potential costs.
Okay.
And basically try and put a timeline on when she's going to be incurring these expenses. And I'm going to continue to work with her and her office on this, so.
Good, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, to the auditor. Do you now provide the members of the school committee with a report on where they stand in terms of the budget as they go through the year?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, again. I have sent this over just as we agreed a couple, probably about a month ago, stripping out all the other city data, just for strictly the schools. I'd send it off through the mayor's assistant, as well as to the superintendent and to the interim CFO to present for them, so.
Okay. So every member of the school committee should has that and should know where they are in terms of what's being spent at any point during the fiscal year, or at least a quarterly, right? Is that how often it is, quarterly?
It's quarterly. It's, this is through the end of the second quarter, and I would fully expect that they brief the school committee on it.
Okay. And I suppose like the city council, if a member of the school committee were to call you if they had any questions regarding a line item or a portion of the budget, that they would be able to do that, right?
Yeah, no, I've always been willing to speak with anyone, both the city council, school committee, that has questions specifically about the budget. Excuse me, the budget. I try and give them as best as I could, as far as detail that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next, we have communication from the city manager. Motion responses. First is the Paris Accord. Counselor Cirillo?
Hi, yes, thank you. This was a great report. It was very thorough, so thank you so much. I would like to have the maker of the report come up and explain, because it is with regards to, in August 2017, the city council unanimously voted to adopt a letter from the Lowell Sustainability Council asking the mayor to join with other cities and towns in honoring the commitment of the Paris Agreement. And I see some really fantastic things, efficiency upgrades and the installation of electric vehicle charging stations and our electric vehicle fleet, so, and solar. So please, if you could just go through what's in this report, that would be great, so that the city can understand. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Cirillo, to the full city council, to the residents and businesses in Lowell. My name is Catherine Moses. I'm the energy manager for the city, and it was such a pleasure to respond to this report, because the Paris Agreement is the climate change agreement that is looking to have commitments for each country in terms of their emissions reduction. The United States committed to reducing their emissions from 26 to 28 percent from a 2005 baseline by 2025. And the news in the report that I prepared, it's about an 18-page report, I'll just try and hit some of the high points. The good news is that the city's municipal operations, we've actually already reduced our emissions by 29.49 percent from our 2008 baseline when we became a green community. We've also done a number of energy efficiency upgrades with the leadership of this council that have been showing dividends. We've helped our residents and businesses to connect with existing energy efficiency programs. We have developed a lot of solar within the city, according to the Mass CEC. Within the geographic boundaries of Lowell, we have about 10.2 megawatts of solar installations through residents, businesses, the municipality, the university. We also have 6.8 megawatts of off-site solar developments for which the city is a host customer. We're currently running a solarized Mass Plus program to help more residents learn how to go solar at a reduced cost, a reduced price. There are also air-source heat pumps that are a part of that, particularly for people that have high-cost heating fuels. That can be a really great addition to your portfolio. We've also done a lot of work with public transportation, with implementing our clean street, our complete streets projects, and it's really just very exciting to see all the tangible steps that the city has taken, both at a municipal level and a city-wide level, to really get to where we want to be in the future. And I would be happy to answer any questions or expand on any of the things that we've talked about.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're all set? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Energy Saving Performance Contract. Counselor Kennedy? All set? Next, we have the CTI presentation. Counselor Elliott, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this report, it says that the CTI community teamwork will present to the city council next Tuesday, January 29. So thank you so much. I look forward to seeing that, because we don't realize that there's a homeless population of our youth. And when CTI had a seminar, one long, very long day, I was shocked to learn that I personally thought that people were homeless and were the youth. thought that people were homeless and were the youth because they were on drugs and their parents couldn't handle it anymore and threw them out of the house and they lived on the street. That is really not the case, as you would think. It's kids that have, that are at home and see parents doing the drugs and can't handle that, so they feel they've got to get away from that. I mean, that is so sad to know that. So I was shocked to hear the news like that, and that happens. See, just because we bring up our children and we nurture them and we take good care of them, we think everybody lives like that, but everybody does not live like that. Everybody is different, and you'd be shocked to know, the people that we deal with in the sheriff's office, we're not surprised to see how wayward gone they are because of what they've lived through in their life. It's sad. It's very, very sad, and we don't see the bad that happens in this world. You just don't put yourself around it, but if you see that every day, you realize it. So, thank you for letting that come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the Hamilton Canal Parking Judicial Center. Council New.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Managers, and Diane Trad for the report. I do expect this report, and it's, you know, the way I, you know, envision this as going to be. I know that the staff for DPD identified both short-term and long-term plans, and this short-term plan spoke of the number of parcels that being used. I just wanted to know if maybe through you, Madam Managers, to have the staff of DPD, either Joe or somebody, speak of as far as the short-term identifying those parcel, and how many parking spaces do you envision of getting out those parcel for a short term?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Council. Joe Genowitz and as well as Craig Thomas are here from Planning and Development to answer questions. I do want to stress, this is the beginning of a report of progress. As we go forward, we will keep the Council updated on all developments, but to your point, Counselor Joe, if you can answer.
Sure. In terms of the temporary parking lots, obviously, Parcell 2, 3, and 4 is already in existence today. You'd see somewhere around 100 parking spaces on that. That largely supports 110 Canal, and you'll likely see, once the garage is built in the district, obviously, that's going to become a development parcel, and the people that are on that parcel will be moving into the garage. Parcel 5, right now, the Judicial Center workers are utilizing that for parking while that construction project's going on. That features about 50 to 60 parking spaces right there. And then as part of the FNG and Signature Bridge Project, we're building a temporary parking lot on 11 and 12. That also features 45 to 50 parking spaces.
You also identified Parcel 1 for a possible, maybe a private parking building by private entity. That almost right in front of the Judicial Centers on Middlesex Street. How many parking do you envision? Who owned that parcel, anyway? So, and how many parking, if the proposal were to come in places, and then, you know, that private, you know, owner were to build that place, and how fast can they get it built?
Sure. So Parcel 1, right now, the city owns that parcel. So right now, we have received interest from multiple parties about a private parking garage on that, on that piece of land. So DPD has already taken steps to draft an RFP where the city would put out a proposal, request for proposals for folks to show us how they would construct a garage on that property. We'd probably see somewhere around 500 parking spaces on that property if they were able to do a two-bay garage over there. The timing is that, you know, right now, it is being utilized by the courthouse's lay-down area, so they would have to wait until the courthouse is off of that property, which would be beginning in January in 2020.
There's also been a discussion between the city DPD staff and the DCAM staff, asking them or encourage them to have the employees or juror to take public transportation and have that come about.
Sure. I mean, I think, as you kind of gathered from the report, there's really no silver bullet to solve some of the parking issues that we have, you know, in Hamilton Canal or throughout downtown. So as we were exploring potential for a garage on Parcel 1, back when, you know, the courthouse was going through its design, we were looking at it from the city looking to build over there, and we were going to try to utilize a portion of the land that is currently the site for the courthouse. Unfortunately, the way the utilities had to be laid out to get power and such to the courthouse, we couldn't utilize a portion of their land for a bigger garage. That being said, you know, the courthouse is also bigger than what was originally envisioned. Originally, there's only going to be three courts over there. Now, there's seven courts that are going to be over there. So the city and DCAM have worked together to try to emphasize to employees, you know, once people are going to be getting jury duty, and whatever time that is, that there will be a number of public transit options, whether that's through the Gallagher Terminal, from the LRTA, or from, you know, taking the commuter rail.
There's, there have been a discussion of a setback because the current parking garage, the RFP, had been to some sort of a setback. Do that setback is going to impact on either short-term or long-term parking issues with regard to the Judicial Centers and/or the Hampton Canal District?
I don't think so. We've been moving forward with trying to get the garage back on track after the prior bids came in high. So we're utilizing now a CM-at-risk process. We've already gotten OPM on board. We've been meeting with them now to get them up to speed. We're scheduled to meet with them, again, with the designer tomorrow, to start looking at what our options are in order to get this project back on track, back on budget.
So, so invasions that, should there be any concern, any issue with the long-term, oh, with the garage, parking garage, the short-term plans that in place with regard to Parcel 1, 2, 3As, and so on, that's at least to some extent, and communication with DCAM in terms of encouraging staff or employee of the Judicial Center and/or juror to take transportation, that will somewhat address or help the short-term plan, help any concern with the garage upcoming? Is that?
We sure hope so. I mean, so, you know, the temporary parking should not only help the Judicial Center, but as other developments go on in the district, you know, those construction workers are going to need places to park as well. So the temporary parking lots that are in existence will be, you know, utilized by those construction projects that go on, like, say, for wind, for instance, they may be able to utilize Parcel 5 as well. When they start going along, they may be able to utilize that for parking while their development goes on. And then, you know, it could be, at that time, 2, 3, and 4 gets developed, and then they can use Parcel 5. So it's a little bit of a staggered process to developing this district, and there'll definitely be a lot of juggling pieces back and forth, but we don't think the little setback that we had in the garage at this point should be a problem.
Thank you, Joe. I am very encouraged also, and the end of report indicated that they continue to engage all partner as required. I mean, so I am encouraged that the progress of the Hampton Canal District and/or the concern of parking, either short and long-term, will eventually be addressed by the administration and/or the DPD staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Mercy, then Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very concerned about the 900-space parking lot that we were supposed to have with National Park and in exchange for site with the LRTA and BTA area there, and it hasn't taken place yet. And now it's, this parking garage should be completed if everything goes well in 2020, which I'm wondering if the courthouse will be built well before that, and it's, it won't be.
Yes. Sure.
Just briefly, through you to Counselor Mercy. So we were advised by DCAM that the courthouse is not, is behind because of a number of factors, but part of it being the chilling units, chiller units that the company making them went out of business, and that has impacted the construction schedule. So it wouldn't be before, it would be during 2020. Actually, Representative Nangle had reached out and is setting up a meeting with the state delegation and the city with DCAM and the trial court, so we can get a better idea of how far back they've been set, setback.
Yes, please keep us posted on this, because that's very important. 900-space garage, we needed, and I know that the price went up considerably, like $10 million more, $35 million to maybe 10 more million. Be that as it may, I'm concerned about, on paragraph 3, talking about exploring alternative transit options to vehicular parking, such as park and ride on city periphery like Carley Stadium, where sidewalks, where individuals could park and then take a shuttle into the downtown. Isn't this the very issue that Belvidia neighborhood residents had it with Lowell High School? If it was built there at Carley, that they would be inundated with buses traveling through their neighborhood? But I guess it's okay to put shuttle buses there for this purpose? I'm very confused about why it's all right for one, but not the other. Having said that, there's going to be temporary parking on surface lots. If I will take you to Middlesex Street, where there's three or four parcels of flatland on Middlesex Street, right across the street from the Judicial Center, and you will know that it's vacant, and it's been vacant for years and years and years. I thought the city owned it. I called the assessor's office. Those lots are owned by the Charter School on Jackson Street. They do not pay any money for that property. And I don't know why they don't pay money. It's not in conjunction with the school. It's not like teachers are parking there in conjunction with the school. It's not even near the school. But the fact remains, and I want this to be remembered, that if they use these lots to generate money to be parking on the, on that, those surface lots, I want the city to get some money too. They should be taxed. If they're going to make a profit, well, so shall we. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Council Elliot, then Council Milonazzo.
So, Madam Manager, I wanted to get back to the private interest of a parking garage. I think that's good news. We have known for some time that we've needed not one, but two, one, a parking lot for the Judicial Center in large part, but in order to develop the 17 parcels, there needs to be parking. One element was to get bridge access, which has been constructed. The second one is in order to attract developers, we need parking. So I think this is good news. We have 17 parcels. The city owns them all. We're going to sell one of them, build a garage, not going to cost the taxpayers, not going to cause the rate payers anything. I personally think it's a win-win situation, and I know we had received an email about that's a valuable parcel, but I think that parking garage makes the value of those other 16 parcels with the advent of a garage pretty significant, and it'll be done in much more of a timely manner. So I don't know if you can, I know we're going out for an RFP. We're getting appraisals to get market value, so I think this is very good news. Yeah, thank you, Counselor. And just briefly, the, as Joe has mentioned, there's been a number of inquiries about a private entity to build the garage. Given the situation where, as has been said, we will get you the full report. It's been ongoing almost on a daily basis as to what we're doing about the bids coming in, in excess of what was approved by this council. It's very clear the city cannot and will not build a garage that's going to exceed the authorization by the council. And as a result, we went back to the drawing board with our consultants, have restructured the manner and method of construction, and as Joe mentioned, Construction Manager at Risk. There's a whole process that has to be filed. We will explain to the council what was pointed out as some of the issues as to why this may have come in as off of what the council had approved and what was expected it to be. But that said, the whole effort is to get it built on the budget that was approved, and if there have to be some changes to the design, we will, we are working diligently. The OPM for Construction Manager at Risk was hired. There are meetings today, there are meetings tomorrow, so this is full speed ahead to try and make sure that this gets built, the 900-car space garage, as quickly as possible and on the budget that the council has authorized. But there's a great need for more parking in the Hamilton Canal, and so being very mindful of the ability of the city to build these garages, that's where the private interest comes in, and so the RFP should be prepared this month, and I believe out, and we will have a better idea as far as, you know, gauging the interest as well as, you know, other aspects to the bid. What's anticipated, that would be a 500-car garage, and I can tell you, based on projects that we know already that are going on there, these garages will be full almost immediately upon completion of these projects. All the spaces are needed. Well, good news. We're going to have a private garage. It's going to generate tax revenue. The city will not have any liability in its operation, and it will fulfill a need that is significant and growing, and as that area does develop, I think this is the harboring of that development over there that we needed. Thank you.
You all set, Council Elliot? Council Milonazzo?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very good report, dealing with both the short-term and the long-term resolution for parking in the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. I have a question and then a comment. My question has to do with the wind development, and as they're going through their design, working with the city, are they including any onsite parking in their development? Because I know a lot of the new housing developments are, if they can, and again, I know the topography of the soil conditions over there might be such because of it being surrounded by water, you can't put parking underneath, but I was just wondering if they are looking at putting parking underneath.
Unfortunately, they are not. They did look at, try and provide some underground parking under the building, but the conditions were such that they weren't able to do that.
Do we have an agreement with wind relative to the number of parking spaces? And I know they're, most likely, their residents will be gone during the day and are taking public transportation, you know, being close to the Gallagher Terminal.
Correct. There is an agreement for the number of spaces, Joe, if you have the exact number.
Up to 200 spaces.
200.
200 spaces, okay. And then my comment is a result of listening to our local radio station on my drive into work last week, where they were actually talking about parking over at the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, and our caller called in, who I have a great deal of respect for, which is why I'm sharing the story, and he called in, and he was listening to a special on, I think it was on public access television, where they were saying that parking garages within 10 to 15 years will be obsolete. Again, I'm not saying I agree with that, but I just want to kind of get it into the record here, where they were talking about the driverless technology in automobiles is advancing so quickly that people will be taking driverless vehicles to the courthouse, and then those cars obviously have to go somewhere. But in the end of the day, they're saying that, again, this is a caller that we all know, and I certainly respect him, so he called and basically talked about that. So it's going to be interesting to see how quickly that may or may not happen, but I figured we should at least get it into the minutes of this meeting that it's something that could possibly happen in the future.
And that is true. We've had conversations with Planning and Development. I know I've heard Secretary Stephanie Pollak talk on this topic as well. She referred to, you know, 10 years ago, not everybody had a smartphone. Now, everybody has a smartphone. So things can change rapidly in weather, but we have to plan for now as well as down the road. Some of the changes that have been mentioned is, you know, you wouldn't need as many parking spaces because people aren't getting in and out of the, you know, cars. Once they go and park in a garage, you can park them very compactly, and so you can fill a lot more of the autonomous vehicles. So if and when we get there.
Right.
We would make adaptations, but currently, we will need parking for certain in the Hamilton Canal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All set? Thank you. Next, we have the high school project update. Madam Manager.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Council. We have our consultants here tonight, Perkins and Eastman, as well as Skanska, to present to the Council and to the audience at home where we are at this point in the process of the high school and its design. Just briefly, by way of background, back in May, the Council voted to proceed with the Option 3A downtown design. In June of last year, we went to, before the MSBA, and the MSBA also approved that plan to advance us to schematic design. And so since June of last year, after the MSBA vote, the School Building Committee has been working very hard on the schematic design together with our consultants. We have reached the point in the process where the schematic design has been complete. The next steps, and currently, there is cost estimation ongoing, and our consultants will explain that to you. explain that to you. And we expect the cost estimation to come before the council next month in, in February. And there'd be a vote on February 12th in and around authorizing the city to submit the schematic design based on the cost estimates to the MSBA, which must be done by February 20th. And then we will be on the agenda of the MSBA board meeting for the April 10th meeting, where the, we'd be seeking approval of the schematic design and to move forward with the project. Given the extent of the design, given the, the nature of all of the aspects that have gone into us, to this, I know Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Elliott, and the mayor serve on the school building committee, but other counselors may not be as familiar with it. So it seemed like a good idea, talking to our consultants, to bring forward the design tonight so that the council can understand and if they have questions about the schematic design itself. And then we will, next month, be bringing forward not just the design, but if there were any changes, what are called, you know, the, if changes have to be made for cost purposes, but bringing forward the cost. It's a lot to do all in one bite, and that's why we're doing the schematic design tonight and next month, the schematic design with the costs that the, our estimators will have completed by then. So with that said, I would turn this over to our consultants.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Manager. My name is Joseph Brown. I'm with Perkins Eastman Architects. I'm here with a few of my colleagues this evening. Robert Bell, Don Gorielo, Alicia Caritano, and our landscape architect, Ashley Iannacelli. We're also with our OPM. Skansker is Mary Ann Williams and Jim Dowd, who will be speaking to us specifically on some subjects this evening as well. So in updating you, we just wanted to let you know what we're reviewing this evening. We're reviewing the process that we've been going over in the last several months with the school and the school building committee. The program and plan, how the program has influenced the plan, the site design that Ashley will be getting into, and then the building design that, that Don will be getting into in a, in more detail. And then we'll follow up with the next steps over the last few months, over the next couple of months. We've been meeting with a number of groups back, starting back in August with school building committee, educational leadership groups, as well as working groups within the school. We've had meetings with focus groups that specialized in certain information that we needed to get into the building design. And then we've met with a number of regulatory groups within the city, such as Lowell Historic and National Parks, the Special Services Department, as well as Police and Fire Department, Planning and Development. We've recently completed the existing conditions investigations at 75 Arcane. And we've had a meeting with the student forum. So we've been talking with the students, and that was in early December. And we had a specific meeting that specialized just in security. This is the timeline that we've been working to. We started back in 2016. We've made a couple of trips to MSBA, the preliminary design program, and two preferred schematic reports. Each one of those presentations, there was a cost estimate associated with it. And now we're in schematic design. And we're at the end of that period. We're looking at our cost estimate, and we'll have those numbers for you in the next week or so, so that when we reconcile. And then we have a, a meeting for, and a vote with MSBA in April of 2019. Now, we're also establishing the project scope and budget agreement in schematic design. So the cost at this point sets the budget for the remainder of the project. We also will be, Mary Ann will be speaking to you in more detail regarding our CM at Risk selection process, and that's the next slide. After schematic, we'll be moving into what's generally referred to as more detailed design. That's design development and construction documents. And you'll notice that there are cost estimates identified there. There are three additional cost estimates that will be happening during that period. One at the end of design development, one at 60% construction documents, and a third at 90% construction documents. And one of the important things to remember is when you set your budget, you, we need to make sure that we stay on the budget. And we use cost estimates as a design tool to be able to make sure that we do stay on budget. And as Madam Manager mentioned earlier, you know, if we do find ourselves over budget, we look at value strategies, value management strategies to bring the project back on budget. After the design period, we'll be moving into construction document, construction. And there are, that's a lengthy process. You know, I'll know that's a five-year process. But one of the things that I think is important to understand is that you'll be having portions of the building occupied by students before the final end of that. The gymnasium will be occupied in the summer of 2022, as well as the freshman academy, which will be available in 2024. So you can think about it, even though it's a very large project, as smaller projects within that overall larger project. Mary Ann will talk to you about the Construction Manager at Risk process and what's been started and where we're going with this.
Hi, good evening. So we submitted an application to the Office of the Inspector General on December 24th for their review. They can take usually anywhere from four to eight weeks. They, they claim they can usually get through an application in, in a few weeks. And so we're anticipating, it's been almost four weeks now, that we're probably going to hear sometime over the next week or two from their office authorizing us to proceed with CM at Risk. The process that you see outlined here on the screen shows that it's a, it's a two-phase process where we advertise the project for a construction manager. We will put together what's called a request for qualifications for construction management firms. There's probably six or seven firms in the state that have a single project limit that can actually bond the project. So there's a lot of interest from those firms. People have been reaching out, inquiring about the project. Once we determine that we have a pool of pre-qualified construction managers, the next step in the two-phase process would be to put an RFP, a request for proposal, out on the street. And it has, it has the selection criteria outlined in that and how we were evaluating, you know, their teams, looking at schedule, looking at project experience, project experience with renovations, as well as project of the scale and size. So we anticipate that once we receive the technical and pricing proposal, that there'll be an evaluation done so that there can be a determination made of, of firms that, that we think that we would like to interview. Typically, if you interview one, you interview them all. And it's actually a process that's very beneficial, given the, the size of this project, that we really would want to speak to these firms, get their impressions about the project, the process, their creative ideas, and then make a decision about which firm would be most advantageous to the city for this project. So we anticipate that once we have a construction manager on board, it would be important for us to have a kickoff meeting with them and really start working with them, have them take a look at the, at the existing drawings, the estimates that have been put together to date, and really bring them on as, as a full partner. Initially, when a construction manager is brought on board, we're only committing to pre-construction at that point in time, so that as the design is being developed, we have an opportunity for the construction manager to be a partner, looking at constructability review issues, estimating, phasing, and, and working with the team, planning the project. So we, we anticipate that we will have a construction manager on board in May and have a contract executed by early June.
Okay, I'm going to just take us through how the educational objectives have made their way into the design. But before I do, I have a couple of images up just for reference to put the whole project in perspective. This first image is, of course, looking at the existing school from the intersection of Arcane and Father Morissette. You can see, featured prominently in the foreground is the existing fieldhouse. And then this is a look at the transformation of the school. So clearly, that portion of the site where the fieldhouse existed is used more effectively and efficiently to create the new freshman academy, as well as a brand-new fieldhouse to provide green space and lots of daylight into the new school project. Much of the existing buildings, of course, is renovated. So some of the building blocks that go into the educational objectives, the first one is the space summary. This is something that has been included and maybe presented previous times. What I'm here to report on is that there really hasn't been any change. The spaces were determined. We looked at what exists. We looked at what's needed for the new school. And it's gone through the MSBA review process and predominantly has been approved to date. There is still more vetting. For example, special education space has to go to the DESE. But we are on target. We have very little what's called ineligible space. So it's about 4,000 square feet out of 380-some-thousand square feet, very small amount. It's common for most projects, but there were just a handful of spaces that the MSBA considers ineligible. So that's actually good news. The majority of things that the school has expressed a need for, the MSBA is in full support of and fully funding. Companion to the space summary is what's called the educational program. And this is really the educational vision and objectives for the new school. This has been developed by the city, by the school, and was informed by a process of visioning that included many from among the committee, community, the business leaders, teachers, parents, students. And a few of the key highlights that I want to point out here for the objectives, first and foremost, to bring the freshman academy onsite, connect it, still maintaining that it is its own academy space and providing that good transition for, for freshmen into the high school. We also know that it was important to have the school zoned for community use so that it functions properly, so that the community can come in, use the culinary restaurant and other spaces. And that, that community use area and activity space would also become a heart and a hub within the school. Right now, the school is spread out. It still will exist in a number of buildings, but what we're trying to build is, is a real heart and identity to the school. And you'll see that in the design coming up. Another very important aspect educationally was to organize the classrooms into interdisciplinary clusters. So the freshmen have groups of about eight rooms that they would exist in, so it creates a more intimate, small learning environment. But the larger school will also be organized into STEM and humanities clusters. They allow teachers to collaborate with each other and should help foster and improve educational opportunities for years to come, decades. We also know that we wanted to provide great access to student support and house administration areas for the students and to bring good daylight, restored daylight into the school. And of course, through the course of this construction, minimize educational disruption so that this can be, as it's being constructed, as Joe had mentioned, it actually becomes an asset year after year, even while it's still being created. So I'll walk through the floor plans now and show you some of the transformations we're talking about. On the far right is the lower-level plan of the 1922 building or the east side of the canal. It's considered basement space. That's what it feels like right now. What we're talking about is a complete transformation. There is a lot of untapped daylight opportunities to come into the basement, whether it's skylights or clear-story glass that has been blocked up or is ineffective. We're talking about, these are some example images that are very similar to what exists there as a condition, where we can bring daylight in from above, we can bring it in from the side. We can develop rooms so that they're interconnected and vibrant. So what you know now is that lower level will be unrecognizable in the new construction and be more of a, a real celebration of arts and collaboration. Just, and you can see on the far right, the lower level is zoned so that we have the performing arts, as well as the visual arts, the very desirable connection of the TV studio in the same region. And then we also have some ROTC space and some humanities cluster. One floor level up, we can now see where the freshman academy is being built as new construction. This diagram here shows that we're orienting it so the classrooms face pure north or south. This is optimal for energy efficiency, but it's also to create a vibrant educational atmosphere where the, the daylight is conducive to learning and not a disruptive force. So this is a diagram that shows how that's created. The first floor also features a number of controlled entry points. There'll be a new main entry with security located at right up front with good visibility. There'll be a secondary entrance in the east side or, or the 1922 side of the school. And when the students arrive in the morning, there'll be multiple entry points that you can see on the west side of the canal, really bring you into the same heart of the school. So that's just for controlled entry into the school at the arrival time. But throughout the day, it's envisioned that doors would be locked and that there would be control into the main entry or the secondary entry. We've also designed the school so that it can function for events. So for example, the new fieldhouse can be opened up independently, can serve a number of features, and has a, a community entrance on its own side. The heart of the school, also, this is still on the first floor, you can see, is where the main lobby connects to the cafeteria commons. It also has great views of the brand-new green space and quad. It connects to the business tech wing and the freshman academy above it. It also is direct connection to student support space, to the culinary program, as well as to the gymnasium. So we're really creating an epicenter within the school that will be open and vibrant in a celebration of the students and the diversity of Lowell. One floor up, we can see that that main lobby or the heart of the school continues, and it connects to some adjacent spaces, including the house administration, freshman cafeteria, the freshman academy. And the diagram on the far left is what we call a bubble diagram, and that shows the humanities and the STEM clusters. So it's a series of classrooms that are English and social studies for the humanities or math and science for the STEM cluster, all of them integrated with some ELL and some special education space. And that's a repeated pattern that happens whether it's new construction or renovation. We're able to create this in, in the school by reinventing the interior. If I continue, floors three through five, we're showing another cluster diagram. This is the freshman cluster, so it's the eight rooms, again, with special education and ELL mixed in. But that's a repeated pattern for the freshmen within their own wing. There's a lot of opportunities as well. One of the things we're trying to rectify is that even within existing space, we're bringing daylight deep into the school. So where labs exist now with no daylight, we're creating these light wells that can come in. We're trying to work with the students and with the science and arts curriculum to invent what these spaces are. We know they'll bring daylight in, but they can also be a real feature and asset for the school. And additionally, this starts to merge with the landscape. We've got the opportunity and the need for some green roofs, not only for the clean energy program, that'll be a, a new pathway for the school, where we can have photovoltaics and some wind measurement and a number of features. But we can really use some of the rooftops to do things like the gardening and tie that to the nutrition into the culinary program potentially. So there's a lot of opportunities. I'll turn it over and we'll talk just a little bit about the landscape highlights. But where we're, we're starting with a, a school that has no outdoor space, we're really making a school that's very connected to nature.
Thank you. So we really feel like Lowell High School is the hub of education, growth, and community. And to that end, it's really important that all of the landscape spaces support cutting-edge educational uses, but at the same time that they're really inviting to the community. And they provide that great front door and provide spaces for programming of social and community engagement as well. So being an urban school, we have limited space, as Bob just mentioned. So we really need to take advantage of any little piece we can. Some of those are the light wells. And then we have other landscape opportunities. And then we have other landscape opportunities, like Bob mentioned, that could fall in the rooftop gardens. On the exterior of the school, we've highlighted many different locations where we feel like our prime opportunities for landscape and different outdoor learning areas. The main entrance, we have the quad, which we really feel like is a centerpiece of the school. The picnic terrace, which is located very conveniently next to the cafeteria and provides a great opportunity for outdoor dining over the canal. And then what we're lovingly calling the promenade, which would be that walkway now along the canal, which we feel like is semi-underutilized and could be much improved. And then we have the courtyard spaces, which we look at improving as well. So this is a perspective of the main entrance. And when we're looking at this, what's really important is to create a space that will support the sheer volume of students that we have coming in and out and spilling into these courtyards every day. So these spaces need to be shaded, they need to offer some sort of protection, they need to have benches and built-in seating, which you can see here, so that if you're waiting for a parent or a school bus, you have a place to do it. And then we're also integrating stormwater management in some of those outdoor green spaces. Those are all bio-retention areas. And looking at bike rack selections as well and locations for that. Security is also something that is on our minds, and we don't do this in an overt way or we really try to not to. But if you look at this design, things like the stairs, the bollards, the green space that's surrounding the building, those are all providing really important protection so that people can't drive right into the space or drive into a classroom wing. And then this is the quad. This is what we really feel like is going to be the centerpiece. And just to remind everybody, currently, there's no green space on the site. So the students actually during gym classes walk across the street to this really small corner or triangle of space, the Songar Arena, and they use that for their gym class. So this will replace that need, and now we have this great 70 by 130-foot open green space. This could be used for passive uses, gym classes, ROTC, cheerleading, marching band, and then also a great location for any sort of school event. And again, this is surrounded by outdoor seating. And then we have a great outdoor plaza in the front, which could be used as for buses to line up in the afternoons, and it provides a prime opportunity for students to wait outside there. And then again, we're looking at opportunities to make this separate from the public. We want to make sure it's safe, but we want to make sure we have a really inviting edge so it's visually open and that people can see inside, and sometimes those gates could be open to the public as well. Now I'll turn it over to Dawn to give you a look at some of the other pieces.
Thanks, Ashley. So you've seen this already this evening. I want to preface all of these views with they are a work in progress. Nothing is finished. We're in schematic design, and it's all very much fluid, and this is just a snapshot. So where we are today and what is being priced is graphically shown tonight, and it's subject to change for improvement as well as any financial decisions that get made along the way to keep us on budget. But this is what's been priced for schematic design, and I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that this is a fluid process. So what's highlighted here, and Bob mentioned the transformation, it's nice to see the before and after. You can see the freshman academy front and center. The top four floors, as Bob mentioned, are the actual freshman classroom clusters. The first floor is the engineering and robotics and business labs. You'll see in some of the views that that is differentiated with the facade, as well as the science labs in the center that are facing north are just, they're visually separate from your traditional classroom with the punch openings that you'd see on either side. This is north-facing. All of these windows will not have solar shading, but on the south side we do. And Bob mentioned how we specifically orient that building for optimal daylight. You can also see that the connection, the new construction connection to the new gymnasium, I'll just, for the sake of those who don't know, freshman academy, 1980s building, we're putting a new addition to connect to the new gymnasium, which is here, and then the 1922 building and the original 1897 building. And you can just see the single-story bridges. You'll see it better in another view in a moment. So just to orient you around the quad, which Ashley so eloquently described. So you can also see here and here the light wells that Bob mentioned, and those are drawing south light with vision glass and bringing daylight deep into that renovated, fully renovated 1980s building. This is the view of the freshman academy from the corner of Arcand and Father Morissette. As I mentioned, the lower level is differentiated. There are different activities happening there than the typical classrooms above and the science. You can see down to the new updated entry that, again, Ashley described, and the quad is just the other side of it, and you can see the new gymnasium in the distance. The materials and the look of the building are still in decision-making mode, but what we've decided with the school building committee is to have durable economic solutions. And what we talked about and have priced is a polished concrete masonry unit, a very durable base, and something that ties into the 1922 historic base, the granite base that exists over there, and starting to knit together some of the materials, as well as an upper durable material, which is, in this case, is a light-colored brick for the sake of the renderings. But again, color and actual, you know, what it will look and feel like is very much still a conversation to be had. So what Ashley mentioned as far as like security and bollards and making sure people don't literally drive up and enter into the building, this finished floor level, it doesn't look it, but it's actually almost four feet higher than the sidewalk. So what we've built is a natural barrier at that floor, so people can't reach up and touch the glass. It'll be that durable base, and then you'll be able to see and to, but not physically touch the glass that exists on that level. So these are just security measures that we inherently built into the design, and in this case, the finished floor level has worked in our favor to allow for that. This is a view of the new gymnasium and quad entry, the public entry from Arcand, and the quad is off on the left. We've created a covering for students that are waiting for athletic buses and/or, you know, just waiting for parent pickup or collecting, you know, waiting with their friends. So this prominent stairwell will bring the public directly into the gymnasium for community events without having to open up the main part of the building, if we don't need to. Farther down the street, closer to where we are, looking back up Arcand, you can see the freshman academy and again the gymnasium and the single slope of the gymnasium, again with a tall, in this case, it's 10 feet high durable base, that same polished CMU that I mentioned, and the brick above with cow wall, which is a diffuse light. It allows for light to get into the gymnasium without the direct glare, so when you're playing basketball or volleyball, you don't get the direct sunlight. So that's what's intended for the materials in that building. This is the new front entry, very different than what we see now, much greener, much more prominent, with Ashley's beautiful landscape, which she described, that allows for both stair entry as well as ramp, which is what's indicated here for accessibility to get you up to the front entry. There's this new canopy for coverage. From the elements, we've also got a new tree that comes up through the opening there to sort of connect the students to the landscape. There's lots of glass. This is the house admin for the freshmen. And then this is a corridor that connects over to the freshman academy at the upper level from the 1980s building. We are improving the 1980s buildings in ways that you can only imagine and that we're basically taking it down to the steel. So for those who think it's maybe a coat of paint or just a materials improvement, it will literally get down, get taken down to the structural steel and rebuilt. There'll be new windows. We'll pop openings into the existing stairwells, which is something that we're doing throughout, so you can see the verticality and the life that's happening vertically with the students. And so this building, while it may look, it'll get cleaned up and repointed as needed, look the same from the outside with new windows. It will feel very different and much more inviting on the inside. This is a view looking back toward the outdoor seating that Ashley mentioned. This is the cafeteria, the roof garden Bob spoke about, single-story bridges, the gymnasium, the freshman academy in the distance, the quad is right between them, and then the 1922 building on the other side of the canal. You can see this is the line of new construction, so quite a bit of this is being rebuilt to connect to the new gymnasium. This is the view of Father Morissette looking sort of south down the canal. We are also making substantial improvements to the 1922 building, so it's not just about the new construction. This is a full-fledged, full renovation. In the case of the historic building, it will be window replacement and upgrades for accessibility at the front entry and repointing and cleaning as needed. But the inside, again, will be completely unrecognizable, as Bob mentioned earlier. And then this is the Kirk Street view. Again, we're just showing some of the exterior improvements. We've also added a new accessible entrance along Kirk Street. We've reconfigured that stair and the landing to allow for accessible entry. It's right here. So not in, it's just between the 1897 building and the 1922 building, and that connector there, there's a stair. So we've rebuilt that in a way that someone can get in and be vertically brought up to those differing floor levels. And then this is a movie. I'm shocked that it played, so bear with me. It didn't work when we practiced it. But this is the view down Kirk, so that image that we had just shown is looking in this direction. That's the accessible entry. We can replay this if others either miss anything or need to see something. So you can start to see how we connect here, the single-story bridges, the new gymnasium, again, the calf, outdoor seating, and the roof garden. So this is Arcand, just so you're aware of where you are in space. This is that canopy I mentioned that connects and provides a barrier to the quad so it can be separated for student use. The freshman academy, this is Father Morissette. And again, you can see the science labs in the middle, typical classrooms either side with the robotics, engineering, business shops below, new stairwell, and this is the entry with the canopy and the 1980s building, of course. And this all ends in the heart of the school and the connection to the quad, and this is all very much being developed, so you'll see more of that to come. Would anyone like to watch it, or was it slow enough for everyone to see? Okay. And I'll hand it back over to Joe for next steps.
Thanks, Dawn. So over the next couple of months, this is what the schedule is looking like. We are receiving our cost estimates currently and reviewing them. Skansker is doing a cost estimate and Perkins Eastman is doing a cost estimate. Those two estimates are then reconciled. Every estimator looks at things differently, so we want to make sure we're all on the same page with regard to cost. If required, we'll have a value management strategy, which we're planning on doing through the first of February. And if required, we'll have a school building committee meeting targeted for the 31st to review value management strategies. And then the SBC meeting vote is on the 7th, followed by the school, city council, rather, vote on the 12th. And we're submitting the package to MSBA on February 20th in anticipation of a MSBA board meeting April 10th.
Council Mercy, let Council Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many stories is the freshman academy?
Five stories.
Five stories. Having said that, it seems to me that the square footage, what is the square footage for the, for this project? What is the square footage?
622,000 square feet.
622,000 square feet. And if I ask you what the cost per square foot to refurbish our new construction, is that the same price per square foot or is it different?
It's different.
Okay, it's different. So let's start with the amount of money per new construction per square foot. What is it?
We're looking at that right now. We're getting estimates.
So you don't have an answer?
No, I don't at this time. We will have estimates for you shortly.
So you wouldn't know the square foot per renovation cost per square foot per renovation? Do you have that as well?
No, not at this time.
Are you familiar with Waltham and what took place in Waltham with the construction there of their school? It's a brand-new school. You know that brand-new isn't as expensive as refurbishing. Is that a true statement or not?
It varies on the project. There's some renovation that can be less expensive than new, and sometimes it can be more expensive than new.
Because what, well, they're estimating 400, $340 million in Waltham, and they're paying $750 per square foot. And when you multiply that, that becomes 460 million. So their 340-million project is now going to be 460 million. So when I hear stuff like that, that bothers me because what they have, they have like, they have a certain amount of students and we have like double, so they have 1,836 students and we have a heck of a lot more. So when I see what it's costing them, I'm wary and nervous about what we're going to pay, so.
I think it's a great question that you have. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison because it's a vocational technical high school. Even though it's a high school, they're offering vocational programs, which on a square-foot basis is a more expensive space to build because you have like 22-foot floor-to-ceiling spans. It's not a typical conventional high school. Second of all, I think what Joe was trying to speak to is depending on, for example, in the 1922 building, if we're maintaining the brick and repointing the facade and replacing windows, that's very different than in the 1980s building, which is also a renovation where we're tearing it down to the steel, to the steel frame. So it's deceiving to try and compare because they're not identical educational programs, they're not identical spaces, and they're not identical structures. So, you know, we will be having this information. It's really important to understand that once we determine what the project's scope and budget is and it's approved by this body as well as the Mass School Building Authority, we will be working within that cost model. We are not allowed to exceed the budget at all in the project funding agreement, and so we will be going for, once we move into the next step, there'll be three more iterations of design where we will also be doing cost estimates, where the construction manager will do a cost estimate, Perkins Eastman will do a cost estimate, and we will keep reconciling to that cost model. The MSBA would not allow us to proceed in submitting a project that's over budget.
Oh, good, because I will kind of hold you to that, so that's a good thing.
You can, you can, absolutely.
Okay, and I'm asking you, is there any new boilers in this, in this project? Boilers? Heating, HVAC, heating?
Yes, yeah, there are new mechanical systems on the east campus, the 1922 building and the west campus.
And I hope there's a new heating system in the music room because it's very cold there.
Yes.
I couldn't make music in that room. It would be too cold.
I think it's fixed, but.
Okay. And any roofs going on? Roof, roofs? Roof, roofs?
Yes, there's a roof replacement cost that's underway currently, and all, the entire building will have new roofs by the time it's completed.
I think it's very nice, what I see. I'm just very sad about the dentist's office, but that's my opinion, and I'm sorry about that, but thank you.
Councilor Lee, Milanazza, then Conway.
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions. So, where we just left off with the roofs, what's the plan for the 1922 building, where it needs to be replaced now? What are we doing with that? Trying to incorporate it so we're not ripping off new roof, or we're, you know, how are we trying to mesh that together so it's covered and we get money back on it?
Yeah, the work that's being done now, a number of pieces of work, the, there's a roof replacement, which includes the insulation, and there's masonry work associated with that, and flashings that are associated with that masonry. All of that will remain in place as we move forward. And the rooftop equipment that we're placing on the, say, for example, the 22 building, that will be coordinated and cut into that roof. So there will be flashing into that new roof. When we're totally complete with the project, the plan was to replace the rubber membrane, so you'd have a brand-new roof, but all of the work that you've already done will be maintained.
So you're saying, at the end of the project, we're going to replace the roof again?
That was the thought, yeah.
So why, that, that, so it's a work in progress.
It is.
I don't see why we're going to replace the roof twice, though. I mean, we got to figure out a way to do it once and get credit for it, right?
Well, the credit for that has everything to do with the timing of when that roof is done.
Right.
Yeah. With regard to the membrane, I think, you know, depending on how many openings we cut into that and wanting to maintain that warranty that you're going to have in place by the time you finish the work right now, is really what the strategy is. If we can maintain that warranty, and it goes, you know, 20 years into the future, then we can, don't have to replace that membrane. We were carrying that cost as a safety net in the event that it had to be replaced.
All right. Is there a way, once we, at what point can we get credit for the roof? Once we start this? Once, when we take a vote in February, is the project started, or what, what point do you start getting reimbursement?
I think we're mixing two projects together, because it's...
Oh, we are, but, but, let me just ask you, I'm, I'm not paying for a new roof now to rip it off in six years, so at what point do you think the MSBA would give us reimbursement for starting this, this project? Is there a time?
The MSBA will not provide any reimbursement for the repair to the roof that will be taking place.
What time, what time will they start giving us reimbursement?
Once you have an approved project.
Okay, so once we approve the project?
But what I'm trying to point out to you is that the, the project was already designed by another firm.
No, I know that, I know.
And, and so the MSBA won't pay for that roof replacement, but they will participate in anything we do with the roof as part of this project.
All right. How big are the window wells approximately? The light wells that go down?
22 by 30. Larger than that.
It's about...
Just about.
18 by 30?
18 by 30 feet.
Don't pull us to that, it's...
Yeah, okay, I just want to know about, and then...
Larger than you'd think, because when we went out and walked it in the existing, if you know where the current student support area is, when you walk in the front door and go to the left, it's that, almost that whole thing, including one of the bathrooms, but not both.
Yeah.
So if you imagine that, that corridor, where the, yeah.
Okay. And then, when you have the drawings from, on Arcand Drive, is the street affected, or we're going from the curb in? We're not affecting, like, the lanes of traffic, right?
No.
So all those drawings start from the sidewalk and go in to the...
Ashley, correct me, sorry, I'm really loud. Did I wake you up? We do show a curb cut for, for some parking or pull-off, but the actual street is not affected by that. That's coming off of the current property.
Okay. Kirk Street, are we eliminating some doors, so we don't have as many entrances into the building?
I don't think so. We have the, do you want to answer it, Bob?
Sure. So from a historic point of view, what we're trying to do is refurbish what's there. It doesn't mean that if doors exist, that they become, they remain entrances. So we're controlling the number of entrances.
Okay, so for safety reasons, we may not, okay. And then...
A lot of them will be exit-only, if that makes sense. So they'll exist as doors and have panic hardware from the inside, but not a way to get in from Kirk Street and, even the canal side, for that matter.
And then, just finally, where do you see, like, the deliveries and the dumpsters and all that going?
Yeah, we could probably go backwards. So it's critical that in the first phase, if you will, when we're building the new gymnasium wing, that wing also will house the new kitchen and the primary boiler mechanical room. That's critical, because in the first phase, we want to build those services, so we can maintain continuity, heat, as well as food service. So the, we have a new roadway that goes alongside, it's on the, on the site, that goes alongside that gymnasium, and that's where service deliveries will go into the school. So currently, right now, there's a dead end and really not enough maneuvering space. That'll be a road that may or may not connect through to the existing street, Dutton. But at the very least, there'll be enough room on-site for maneuvering and for service vehicles. Does that make sense?
Can you just explain that one more time?
Sure. Go backwards just a bit. I think the aerial might be good. So, we're talking about the street, it's actually not a street, but...
Yeah.
On the property right now, this now becomes the new service road. So it'd be alongside the Masonic Temple.
So it's like a two-lane, two-lane, both ways?
Right now, we have it wide enough. It remains to be seen, we're still working on traffic, whether we make that two-way, or whether it's just extra wide. It certainly would be wide enough for emergency vehicles and for trucks to maneuver. You can't see it, but as you go along this road, there are then service entries for deliveries, as well as dumpster and a few other things in this corner. So it's, it's kind of screened and hidden, for the most part, but allows service into the school.
All right. So a tractor-trailer could go in that way, turn around, and get it back out?
Yes, or a tractor-trailer could back in, or it can, we're looking at the maneuvering that can happen down this end, or it may connect all the way through to Dutton. That remains to be seen.
So is the gymnasium, it has to be that big?
Yeah, that's, the size of it is based on a number of things. First, we're looking for a total of nine teaching stations to maintain the school program. But inside the gymnasium, we're also trying to get the beneficial dual-use. If you put nine gym stations together, you get an indoor track, you get track and field dimensions, basketball dimensions, bleachers. So it's actually tight, if you will. So it really needs to be the size and proportion that it's, that it is to accommodate all the uses.
Okay. I mean, I just, I know it's still in the early stages, but that's something that doesn't work right now, and it doesn't make sense to build it again if it doesn't work.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're definitely building...
Understand what I'm saying, right?
Absolutely.
What we have now doesn't work.
Yes, we're making it...
And do it again, right?
No, we're making it work. We're providing the dimensional clearances for truck maneuvering that don't exist now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilor Milanazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's certainly very exciting, and I want to thank you for the work you've done, and thank the school building committee for the work that they've done over the past, past few years. And it's getting to a point now where, hopefully in April, we'll be getting approval from the MSBA. I have a question relative to the construction manager. You mentioned that they would be on board, and they would be working in the pre-construction phases, and then go into the construction contract. Are there benchmarks during the pre-construction phase that the construction management company or team needs to meet in order for them to go into the full construction contract, or is it all just one contract? On the construction management?
Well, what they'll do is, when, when they're brought on board, they will give us a pricing proposal. And the pricing proposal will include their fee, general conditions, overhead profit, and also what's called pre-construction, which is prepping...
Right.
For construction. So they're, they're doing estimating constructability reviews, you know, verification of, you know, the existing conditions with the site. And they're, they're very engaged with the team, understanding the phasing and the schedule of the project. What we envision, and this will be worked out over time, but the, the possibility of them starting construction, say, for example, starting demolition prior to the completion of design.
Okay.
And that's the benefit you, you get with a construction manager, so that, for example, if we were to issue the demolition package for 75 Arcane Drive, we could start earlier, because we're starting the demolition earlier, but still completing design. And, and it's, it's a process that's recognized, utilized a lot by the state. It's part of the Construction Reform Act of 2004. So it's, it's a delivery methodology that, that's utilized both in public and private sector.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned, you mentioned phasing. As we go around and meet with parents and staff at the high school, they're still concerned with the phasing of the construction, and making sure that the students, the faculty, the staff are safe during, during the construction. So, again, I would encourage those discussions to really kind of drill down into the, into the nuts and bolts, if you will, to make sure that, again, I'm still having no modular classrooms, I'm assuming that that's where we still are, but at the same time, making sure that the kids are safe, the students, the parents are still very much concerned about that. So I think that's a discussion we really need to get into, into the weeds, if you will.
We agree.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And anyhow, I'm very excited with the design. My oldest grandson will be in the freshman class in 2025, so it's all, it's all good. Thank you.
Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a few housekeeping questions. The, let me see if I understand this correctly. The change to the exterior of the 22 building on Kirk Street, is it just, just the entrance, one entrance change? Is that what it is? And, and, I think that's what I understand it to be. Is that correct? And what is, what is unusual about that entrance?
Let's see, I could probably go to some of the images. So, the 1922 building, we actually have the front entrance here, if you will, to the auditorium.
Oh, on the side?
Yeah, it's on the Father Morissette side, and that is being rebuilt, because currently, right now, it only brings, it brings people into an entry level that has barriers, has more stairs...
Correct.
And also doesn't have proper security. So we're bringing it all up closer, so that people in a wheelchair or just in need of more universal entrance can get in, and we can also have a security officer right at that level. So that's the only modification. We're replacing, of course, the windows in historic fashion.
I wasn't sure if that was on Kirk Street, but I, I certainly understand what you're saying on that.
We do have...
That's a great idea, right?
On the Kirk Street side, we do have something that you wouldn't consider a change. The entrance here on the Kirk Street side is within one step of being accessible to those in a wheelchair.
Right.
So we were able to rebuild the interior stair and make sure that it exits pretty much at the sidewalk levels, so, and there'll be an elevator just inside the door. So without changing the exterior look, that will also become an accessible entrance.
Okay. I, I will say that when you put this video on, it really puts things in perspective, quite frankly. When you, when you take a look at the aerial view, it can get very confusing, and even spending so many years down there, it's still, once you get this view here, now it, I think it really comes together. The, one of, just, just one other thing here. Quite often, you go into different communities, you'll, you'll hear people say, you drive by a high school, and you'll say, "Oh, my God, look at that. That looks ugly." And I don't know how many times I've heard people say that, and then when you talk to them from the community, they say, "You know, it's, it's a shame that it didn't reflect what the community is, is like." So when, you know, when I hear things like that, and you're talking about the exterior materials and what it would look like, when are those decisions made in this, in this process? Is it towards the end?
They'll be made in the next phase. So upon approval, everything that we have right now is conceptual and establishes a budget, but it is based on things that we've heard to date. In the next phase, it's called design development, those decisions will be flushed out and effectively finalized. So that's another year.
Okay, so it, it will reflect the, the community itself, too? I mean, because, you know, again, you, you look at, let's take, which I'm sure you're probably familiar with Phillips Andover, in, Phillips Academy in Andover. You know, they, they could put a building, and you have no idea whether that building's 200 years old, or whether it's 10 years old. It just kind of meshes right in with the, with the community. Are we going to have that kind of a look, where, again, what I'm concerned with is that it, it does reflect the community? I mean, I would hope that we would probably keep that in mind. And, and the last thing I wanted to ask, and we've seen this, we've gone through some construction in schools for years, and it seems as though things break down pretty quick. And, and the question then is always asked, well, what's the warranty on this? The workmanship to, you know, is that, what's the follow-up? So do we have things in place here for this new construction that, or will we? That there'll be certain warranties, or we'll have a better handle on something like that, to be able to...
Yeah, I can just start with...
I know I'm being awkward here with this question, but if something, you put a beautiful building up, and all of a sudden, there's a problem with whatever it may be, you know, whose, whose responsibility will that be?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with, the MSBA requires that, that the solutions are built to be long-lasting. They say 50-plus years. We, we expect it to last longer. So we start with what the requirements are with the MSBA and the rigors to make sure that it's a building that's built to last. But, Joe, you want to add?
Yeah, the, the things that typically require service are the things that are moving, you know, like mechanical systems. And so, the contractor owns a year warranty after substantial completion, but you also, at the end of that process, will have maintenance manuals. So everything that's put into the building will have a protocol on how it's to be maintained and the frequency of how it should be maintained. So the, and there'll be complete instructions given to the maintenance staff on how to continue to maintain the building.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That kind of clears up a lot of things. Thank you.
Councilor Cirillo?
Hi, yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I look forward to, you, will you be showing us the logistics plans for each of the phasing stages for the project?
Yes, we've developed them preliminarily. That strategy was developed early on and was part of the conversation, and led to some of the decisions that had been made with regard to the option that was selected, so that we didn't have to have temporary classrooms, as an example. But as the CM comes on board, and we start to get into the nuts and bolts of, of how they see doing this, we'll get into refining that more. And open communication, I think, with city council is going to be important. And of course, to, the, the primary driver in all of this is maintaining the educational program. So we work closely with the school department to make sure that school comes first and construction comes second.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's great. I think that the residents need to know and understand that there will be a, a logistics plan, that they will be able to see and know how, where the, the students will be at all times, and how safe they'll be. Also, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you and to the school building committee, because I know how hard you're working, and, and I think you're doing a great job. So thank you so much.
Any other questions in the group? A question, we talked about, you went from the two-story bridges to the single-story bridge, which is cost-saving, and it's the right thing to do. But I brought the issue up about the bridge coming from the gymnasium into the 22, also 1898 building, that goes into like a half opening. Were you able, are you able to deal with that? In other words, the openings on both sides, will they be full access?
Yeah, we, we have been discussing that with Lowell Historic, and they had some ideas that they'd like us to explore. So we're going to continue to, to work through the details of that. So we're going to continue to work through the details of that.
I think safety-wise, I mean, that's just one of those, I hope you can-
Yeah, we understand.
Hard to solve, but it's doable. Thank you.
We're working on that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as I stated earlier, this is, you know, one update to the council, an important one as far as what the schematic design looks like and to the public. As we move forward, we will bring updates constantly so that everybody is well aware of the project, where we stand, where we stand in design. And then certainly, once there's phasing issues brought forward, I think it's critically important that everybody understand what, how this project will be implemented. I think, I do want to thank the team. I think this gave us a bird's-eye view of what the project looks like. As I mentioned, in the School Building Committee, there have been a lot of decisions, choices from HVAC to exterior finishes to interior finishes just for price pointing. And I thank the School Building Committee for their diligence and hard work. I did want to also point out, this is a question that has come up quite a bit, and it was cleared up at one of our meetings, and that had to do with new construction versus renovation. And I think, Don, you alluded to that. But I think it's important that people know when, in the language or the lingo of the architect and the MSBA, renovation essentially in this case is gutting the buildings inside. Everything will be new, all new system, all new mechanicals, new walls. With one exception, the 1922 building, Don, you mentioned there was a particular flooring that had to be-
Terrazzo floors.
The terrazzo floors. If you want to address why the effort is to maintain those.
Absolutely, thank you for reminding us. In the case of the 1922 building and of quite a few of the corridors, there's gorgeous, well-maintained and durable terrazzo floors, which nowadays are basically unaffordable to a lot of communities. So the value in saving those is tremendous, and we'll do our best to maintain those where we can and rebuild walls and finishes around them. So our goal in that case is to preserve and maintain those floors and then do the full-scale renovation, as Madam Manager mentioned. All around it, we'll demo substantially and rebuild. So thank you for reminding us. Our renovation in this case is very much a demolition and rebuild.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the place on file by Council Kenny, second by Council Milonazo. Thank you very much. Next, we have a communication. We appoint Joanne Howell, CTI, to the Hunger Hobbitless Commission. We need a motion to accept the place on file-
Submoved.
By Council Mercer, second by Council Kennedy. And we have Communication City Manager requests out of state travel for Member Lowell Police Department, a motion to adopt by Council Kennedy, second by Council Milonazo again. Roll call.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazo.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Next, I need a vote to authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement with Enterprise Bank and Trust Company. We've gotten an overhanging sign. Waive the full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to enter into a license agreement with the Enterprise Bank and Trust Company to approach upon the city of Lowell property 170 Merrimack Street, Palmer Street, west of the east side above the sidewalk to the left of the main entrance of the building, Lowell, Massachusetts. Need a motion to adopt-
Still moved.
By Council Kennedy, second by Council Conway. Roll call.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia. Council Milonazo.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Next, vote to authorize the manager to execute an MOU with the traffic supervisors. Waive the full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the City Council to ratify and approve the execution of the city manager of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lowell and Association of Traffic Supervisors covering the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. I need a motion to adopt by Council Elliott, second by Council Kennedy. Roll call.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, through you, the man. Could you just explain a couple of key things that you did that were?
Sure. First and foremost, let me just say, what was key in this negotiation was that we are having a difficult time filling our crossing guards or traffic supervisor jobs. It's not an easy job, and we were vastly underpaying our people. As a result, on any given day, police officers are being called to do crossing duties. In some days, nine or 10 police officers are required to cross. So it's not a cost-effective or way of handling that, but critically important. And it also, we looked at what other communities were doing. So as a result, the crossing guards are getting a raise in this situation. They were making $12 an hour. They're going to be paid $15 an hour. And that is still far below some communities, but makes it a little more competitive. It was something that was much needed. Otherwise, the cost of living increases is the same as other negotiated settlements. That is a 2% increase for the current fiscal year that we're in. For next year, 1% on July 1, 2019, 1% on January 1, 2020. In year three, it would be 1% on July 1, 2020, and 1% on June 30, 2021. There were other housekeeping issues, substituting some language for a board that no longer exists. Arbitration, actually, they would go, agree to go to the DLR, which is what other units have agreed to, and some things that they wanted picture IDs, which certainly is, makes sense in meeting with the superintendent of police twice a year.
I thought that was good, thank you. And it is a difficult position to fill, so I think that'll help. Hopefully, by next year, we'll get all the open positions filled, so nice job, thank you.
Roll call.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazo.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, we have vote transferring funding for the DPW for public buildings, schools, and fleet. Waive full reading and second reading by title. Transfer $100,000 in funds for operational funding for the public schools and fleet for the Department of Public Works. Need a motion to adopt by Council Elliott, second by Council Milonazo. Any discussion? Council Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I will support the transfer, but I just want to express a concern relative to the staffing levels. And I know that we're taking this money from permanent staff, moving it over for this fiscal year. But again, we have that Collins report. We need to continue to be cognizant of the fact that we are down bodies, plus we have an aging workforce. So again, I'll support the transfer, but just keeping in mind, we really need to plan for the future.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor. And this is something that we will look at going forward. Obviously, the needs in the schools in particular, these past months have been extreme, as well as some of the needs in our municipal buildings. And I know the CFO can speak more directly to the manner and means of this transfer and the need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. To your point, Councilor, the department has advertised a few positions. Some of the difficulty has been in finding and attracting quality candidates. However, the result of that is that we've had an accumulation of a surplus in the salary and wages, which allows us to transfer with a council vote into the operating expenses to really put money into the fleet and then into the school buildings and the DPW expense accounts. So we can do that without, we've already set the tax rate, and we don't need to have any additional impact on taxes. And this will allow the Public Works Department to address some more of the outstanding work orders for schools.
Council Leahy?
I just wanted to add, too, since we're talking about transferring this money to the schools. So I just want to mention that I thought the custodial staff at the schools did a good job this weekend with the cold weather. We had a few incidences that they caught right away, cleaned up some leaks, found some water, some problems with the cold weather. So I just thought they deserved a shout-out that they did a nice job this weekend.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, very true. And that was, I want to thank the superintendent. We talked about these extreme cold weekends, and the superintendent was going to have custodians check on their buildings. And luckily, because they did, they caught three frozen coils that resulted in leaks that could have been much worse, but they caught them in relatively quick period of time. And again, lands and buildings was in the schools. They were busy on Sunday when we had a pretty significant leak over at the Pollard Memorial Library. And I want to thank Jimmy, our own custodian, who spotted it early Sunday morning as he was out shoveling and saw ice on a window, made a very quick call, and that could have been a very big disaster, the amount of water that was pouring through that broken pipe. So I think our custodians all across the board are doing a great job keeping an eye on these buildings through this extreme cold. And DPW is answering these calls. So it's not been an easy period for them, and part of the reason why we need money for this overtime transfer in part.
Right, and I was going to add that all the city employees, they did a great job this weekend with the snowstorm. They missed two good playoff games. Hopefully, we have no snow during the Super Bowl, so.
Thank you. Discussion, roll call.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazo.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, now we have the resolution, City Council support Massachusetts Senate Docet 101, the Education Promise Act. Waive the full reading and second reading by title. City Council and the city of Lowell wishes to be recorded in support of Senate Docet 101, an act providing rightful opportunities and meaningful investment for successful and equitable education. I need a motion to adopt-
So moved.
By Council Cirillo, second by Councilor Mercia. Roll call.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Milonazo.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Thank you. Yes.
Did the school committee pass a similar resolution?
Yes.
And so is, have they signed that, or do they need a subsequent vote, or is it done?
It's going to go to the Solicitor's Office, come back the same way as a referendum, and it'll be signed.
Okay, I would just request, if I could get a copy of both of those, when they're all set.
We plan to provide that. Also, we plan to try to put a workshop on for teachers and parents regarding this effort being made by the Senate, okay? Thank you. All right, next, we have the Environment and Flood Issue Subcommittee meeting of January 22nd. Council Cirillo, do you have a?
Hi, yes. We had in attendance councilors Elliott Kennedy, Mercier Conway, Chief Winward was here from the Fire Department, and Christine Clancy from the City Engineers' Office. We had, what was brought up was the height of the water for the gauge, the Patacaville, and the, oh, gosh, I'm just, I'm reading my notes and I'm getting all confused, so I apologize. The gauge is at the Huntsville Falls Bridge, which really doesn't make any sense. And it was brought up that we should have a gauge at the Patacaville, Patacaville Falls side and, and install, excuse me, I apologize, install a USGS gauge above the dam. That's one of the options that was brought up. A second option was to move the existing USGS gauge above the dam. And then a third option was, don't put in a USGS gauge at all and measure it with what looks as a yardstick. So those three suggestions were at it, were mentioned. And then Councilor Elliott had mentioned that he had put in a motion for a gauge. And the fire chief said that he had a letter from the city solicitor explaining about the resolution with ANL that had been previously mentioned with the 50-foot requirement. And one speaker, Jim McMorrow, brought photos of the flooding at the blacksmith shop and the erosion that the flooding was causing. And Deb Forgione spoke, and she asked what department would head up the effort with regards to the gauge? And also, who would spearhead the process of having the city engaged in the ANL relicensing process? Councilor Mercia had asked what the cost for, the cost of a gauge is. And also, one other, another thing that was brought up were, the boards seem to be frozen currently, and the question was, will they go down at 50 feet if they are frozen? So that's a concern. And there were two motions that were brought up during the subcommittee meeting. The first motion was by Councilor Elliott, and it was to request Representative Trahan send a letter to the USGS and any regulatory commissions and ANL concerning the relocation of gauges on the river and have the city manager designate personnel to deal with the current issue. And the second motion was by Councilor Kennedy, and that was to get in touch with ANL-
And the motion-
-concerning the freezing of the bladder dam, and also have a review of the cost concerning the gauge. So that's the report. I hope that I mentioned everything, but if there's anything else to mention.
All right, I need to accept this as a report of progress, along with the motions given.
So moved.
Council Kennedy, and second by Council Mercia.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Wire Inspector Verizon, New England, request installation of underground condo to replace overhead service at 165 Thondike Street and Highland Street. I need a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, second by Council Elliott. Next, we have a petition. David St. Hilaire requests amendment of city ordinance to allow residents to keep miniature pigs as pets. Need a motion to refer to the Law Department for reporting recommendations. So moved. By Council Kenny, second by Council Mercia. Yes, Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David St. Hilaire Jr. was here at the meeting for quite a long time. I guess he got tired and he went home, but he wouldn't have spoke anyway because he has something wrong with his throat. But he did talk, he passed a lot of information through the packet, very, very thick. He did his homework. And I don't know what to say about that. I happen to love animals, and I don't have a problem with it. But be that as it may, we're referring it to the Law Department. I wonder if we could refer it to the Animal Advisory Subcommittee? I don't know if-
Do you make a motion?
You know, because it is an animal, and I kind of like that. They're very clean, from what I understand, whether people believe that or not, but they, I hear they make good pets, and they're just obedient if they're trained right, and they're very clean. I don't know.
Have a motion to go to the Subcommittee? I need a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, by Council Kennedy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did we vote on the motion?
You what?
I just, there was, I just wanted, I recall that we had a discussion several years ago when the city was looking at whether or not we should allow chickens-
Yeah.
-in people's backyards. And there was somebody that came in, and they had a miniature pig. And I remember that they were at the microphone. And what I, I remember during their discussion, they indicated that their pig's name was Bacon, which I thought was an excellent name for a pig. And that's, that's all. I just wanted to recount that story. Thank you for your patience.
And-
You brought it up in your book, too? Yes, Council-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And her moving into the city was continued upon the fact if she could bring her pet with her, but it never got anywhere, so I assume she never moved here. And I felt bad because she at least had the courage and the wherewithal to come forward and ask for permission. I thought that was nice.
As a side note, she would have been a neighbor of the mayor.
Oh, that's right.
Miniature pigs are cute.
they want to maintain the city of Lowell present municipal election representation or the direct city to develop a new municipal election representation for the city. Second?
Second.
By Council Elliot. Before I allow this to be discussed, as I've done in all the previous motions regarding the bony process, because we have litigation against the city, I'm asking the city solicitor to render her opinion. Madam Solicitor.
Sure. This is a matter that is already pending in the executive session and, and to be in order. It should be taken up under the, in the executive session.
Will you allow it to be taken out?
Let me, I couldn't hear what the city solicitor said.
I'm happy to repeat.
Repeat, please.
What I was saying is that this is a matter that is currently pending in executive session. And so.
This particular motion is?
This subject matter, and certainly this motion falls well within that subject matter. This motion, as well as other motions, are things that are being currently debated by and deliberated upon by the entire council in the executive session. And the appropriate place to do, to take up this motion and to discuss it and deliberate on it would be in the executive session.
So, Mr. Mayor, let me ask you a question on this, just to clarify. Are you saying, or the city solicitor saying, that I can't speak on this motion?
Basically, that because of litigation, it should go to the executive session. And when final outcomes are made, that can be part of the process of referring it to open meeting.
Well, for the, for the record, I want to say that I completely disagree, because we've got 50,000 voters, that I think it's important that we, we let them participate. And, and what this is going to do at this particular point is.
I understand the process, but I'd ask for a motion to decide whether we allow this to be discussed or go as the city solicitor to Subcommittee or the, back to executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a problem to discuss it. I know that we had the opinion of the city solicitor. But if you notice.
We haven't discussed.
The newspaper called us up, and many people on this council talked to him. So what's the difference between talking to the reporter?
No, the issue is, this is in litigation at this point.
Well, it was in litigation.
And I don't want, I don't want to put the city, I'm in the fault of the advice of the city solicitor, I do not want to put the city, you know, in the crosshairs of a serious problem, a lawsuit. The issue is, we had other motions that are similar to this, that we put into executive session so we could discuss these things fully. And I'm looking to bring that back, not to have this session here. Madam Solicitor.
Thanks. That's a fair enough point to be brought up. However, what I would, what I would respond with is that there is a distinction between individual counselors making comments, say, in a newspaper article, as opposed to this body actually officially acting on, on anything. And if an individual counselor makes comments in the newspaper, it doesn't have any real binding effect on the city, per se. What this council does as a, as a governing body, however, does. And so taking it up in open session in this chamber, and having the members vote on it or act on it and deliberate on, on it in public would be different. But I mean, it was an excellent point to bring up.
So if I go on the radio as my honor rotation, and I talk about it, I won't be in any trouble?
I can't guarantee that.
Well, it seems like that's what you said.
Well, I mean, this, this is the position, I do not want to put the city at risk. That's the point. The, the issue is, other motions that were made that have validity, and we want to make sure that, you know, we, our public is informed. But we are in litigation. We have put all of this into executive session to be able to sit, listen to the city solicitor, and to allow us to put ourselves in such a way that we do not put the city at risk. That's my issue. That's my only issue. Council Millenazzo, then Council Kennedy.
Again, I understand the point, and I will, you know, make a motion to refer it to executive session. Both of the other two motions, some of them could just refer it to executive session. And I too was contacted by the press, and I just said I had no comment. So again, it's up to the individual counselor if they wanted to speak about something that is in litigation and therefore in executive session.
The second one there?
I second.
Second the motion. I'd like to speak on the motion. I think that this is probably, aside from you just ruling it out of order because it's a matter for executive session, I think that if we follow with Council Millenazzo's motion, we can take it up in executive session. And if the council wants at that time, they can request or suggest that it be taken up in open session, and we can take it up at that time. But it seems to me that given that what we've got before us in executive session, that this is where this motion belongs for now.
That's, that's my point at this point. There was a motion made and seconded.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I speak on that?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So in other words, we can take this motion up, and see if I get this straight. We can take this motion up that, that you just read, in executive session.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if the, if the body in the executive session, this, this body here, votes for it, then we bring it forward to you. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there are obviously going to be minutes of the meeting on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when the minutes of the.
Those minutes would have to be released.
The minutes of the meeting will be released. When will the minutes be released on that? Do we have any?
That's the will of the council.
Sorry?
That's at the will of the council, the entire council. That'd be a vote taken by all.
Okay. But do we have, through you to the city solicitor, when would those minutes be given to the public so they could take a look at this, on what we did, on this motion?
Generally, the minutes of an executive session are not released by the council until the need for the executive session has been resolved in full. There can be exceptions to that, but, but that is.
So in other words, if this lawsuit goes on for a year or two, these aren't, these executive session, this, this particular motion, if it was taken in executive session on anything that was said or voted on, would not take place for another year or two? Is that correct?
That's based on the, the majority vote of the council in an executive session by roll call vote. That's possible. Yes.
That's possible. But the way, the way I look at it, at some point, we have to get information out to the general public. There's no question about.
But can't we, can't we release portions of that executive session?
Again, the council can release portions of the executive session if it sees fit. The question was, when does the council release the minutes? And the response to that is, typically, the council would release the minutes of an executive session when the matter for which the executive session has been resolved in full.
But you're, you're correct on that. The council, it's the council's vote that determines the direction.
I mean, I just want to know, I just want the 50,000 voters in the city of Lowell to know what we're doing. I think that's important.
I understand that. Council Kennedy?
Yeah, if I could, let's not mix up this motion with the minutes, so that maybe there'll be a time when the purpose for the executive session exhausted, and then the minutes are released.
Yes.
But the council could at any time, or sometime before that, decide that this motion was okay to take up in open session.
Correct.
And do that at that time.
Correct.
But for right now.
With, with the advice of the solicitor at that time, our expert in all of those things, that have to be put in place. That's all I'm asking for. Just equal play, equal playing ground for everybody.
Council Elliot has asked that we move the question, so.
Okay. All set. Thank you. Next. We need a roll call. Roll call. Council Moon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Some motion to go into executive session. Oh, yes.
A motion to go into executive session.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras. Yes. Council Serrillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Millenazzo.
Yes.
Nine yeas. Thank you. All right. Next, we have by Council Serrillo, request city manager work with the LRTA to incorporate a courtesy button program which will provide buttons for our elderly, disabled, and pregnant riders to allow them to have priority seating on the bus. I need a second?
Second.
By Council Kennedy. Council Serrillo.
Hi, yes. Thank you. I, I am, I'm thinking about the bus that Counselor Rita Mercier had requested. And I also was thinking about, that it is the wintertime, and I remember taking the bus to the train station from where I lived. And when all the school kids, the high school kids packed onto the bus, and it got very, very, very packed. And, and so I heard about this button program. And the New York Metropolitan Transit Authority in 2000, in May of 2017, implemented a button program. And it was for the elderly, the disabled, and pregnant women to be able to have a button that says, please offer me a seat or baby onboard. And also, in May 2018, Toronto, the TTC, started a program, please offer me a seat, button campaign. And in London, they have a program, they've had this program for the London Tube since 2005, with approximately 130,000 badges distributed, distributed every year. So I was, I was hoping to have something like this looked into for Lowell. And I think that it's, it's a wonderful program, and, and to help our elderly, and our disabled, and our, and our pregnant women to actually be able to have a seat on, on the bus without any questions, and just have that badge and have a seat.
Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I feel the good intent of this motion. I mean no disrespect with what I'm going to say, but I have to say what I feel. And I went to the senior center, not specifically for this issue, but I happened to be at a meeting last Friday. And I took it upon myself to ask the seniors if they experienced any hardship with seating on the LRTA buses. And the answer they gave me was no. I, that's what they said. Now, that's only a few of them. Most of the time, there are only three or four people on a bus, this is what they told me. But there are times when they take a LRTA bus, when school is letting out, and then it's rather crowded then. And they told me that basically, the overall students at Lowell High School are very respectful to the seniors, and they do offer the elderly a seat. I know I'm elderly myself. If I were on the bus, and a pregnant woman came on, or a disabled, feeling elderly, I still would get up and give that person a seat. But I think most people tend to be that way. One senior said that there were signs onboard each bus already, asking people to be mindful of elderly and disabled, and to offer them a seat. I believed her, but I had to ask. So if people aren't following these signs, I don't know how they're going to respond to a button. But, but I checked with some members of the LRTA, and I wonder if the maker of the motion called the LRTA to ask and bring forth this motion. I checked with some members at the LRTA administration to confirm if such signs existed on buses. And I was told that they do exist. That only, not only that, but the LRTA bus drivers are trained to look out for elderly, disabled, and pregnant women to make sure they have a seat. This is a training that the bus drivers are put forth. The LRTA gets their orders and regulations from MassDOT, this is what I was told, and the Federal Travel Administration. They are controlled by the state and federal government. They are not required to be governed from a local ordinance, or from anyone trying to instill courtesy, such as a local official. This is what they told me, and they were a little bit put off by it. And therefore, they're, they're not too happy, because they do as much as they possibly can already. This is what they told me. So I'm just relaying a message, because I wanted to know, are we having a problem with seniors, elderly, pregnant women not able to get a seat? Because I wouldn't put up with that either. So that is a good motion. But I did look into it, and it seems like they have everything under control. So I think if we ask and refer this to the city manager, I'm just giving you a heads up, they're not too happy about here and that. And they don't have to follow our rules and regulations. They already do with the state and federal government.
But they could provide us with more information as to what they do do, as you stated.
It's a courtesy button. It's, they're courtesy buttons.
You all set, Karen?
Yes, thank you.
Next, by Council.
Just, just quickly, I understand both points of view. But looking at it from the LRTA standpoint, I think it would be a good marketing tool for the LRTA. So again, I think getting the information from the city manager's office is, is an order. And I would think that the director, Mr. Scanler, would certainly jump at the opportunity, if it was done correctly, done right, to use this as a marketing tool for the LRTA.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council Moon, all set?
It's okay.
Okay. By Council Serrillo, request city manager have the proper department review the age-friendly Boston Action Plan 2017, and provide a report to city councils to preparing an elderly-friendly Lowell action plan for achieving a more elderly-friendly Lowell. I need a second. By Council Kennedy. Council Serrillo.
Hi, yes. Thank you. I know we do have some, a good, a lot of wonderful activities for our elderly. But I see this massive 2017 age-friendly action plan by Boston that was made in 2017 by Mayor Marty Walsh and Boston's Elderly Commission for the first, the city's first-ever age-friendly Boston Action Plan. And it's the city's blueprint to make Boston the best city and place to live for older adults. And the action plan is for three years. They have, they hope to have all 75 action items in the plan squared away and in place in the next three years. And it was developed through listening sessions and engagement from over 4,000 older residents throughout Boston. So I was just thinking that if we could, as the city of Lowell, see how we compare to this, this very thorough action plan for Boston, and see if we can come up as a city with an actual action plan for the city of Lowell, for our elderly. I think that that is the step in a right, in the right direction. Thank you.
Well, I think it's a good idea. I mean, for myself in the future, I think, you know, not now, naturally. We have, we have a Subcommittee on Senior Citizens. You think this might be something to kick off with the senior citizens or something?
Sure. We can, absolutely. We can.
No, to take that, to go those steps?
Yes, to, to move it to the Subcommittee, the elderly Subcommittee meeting group.
Yeah. Wait to Council Elliot.
Yeah, I'm fine. I, that, that's fine. I also wanted to suggest that we also have a council on aging.
Okay.
That they be engaged in, in this process as well.
What's, what's the feeling about, do we, we have our own Subcommittee, the Council on Aging, both good.
Let's, I would support a motion that refers it to the Subcommittee, and just have the Subcommittee get in touch, in touch with the Council on Aging, and make sure that they're engaged in the dialogue over the.
Okay, was motion, Council Elliot, will you second that?
Second.
Okay, fine. Are you all set with that?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Provide, provide the information also.
Oh, yes. I have, I have the action plan right here.
Okay. Thank you. As I said, Council Mercia, now we don't, it's many years away.
Yeah. Could we please have a copy of that? Because I don't know what the action plan is for Boston.
It's quite large, and I only made a copy for myself. So what I'll do is I'll give it to.
So, Council, if you give that to us, we'll make sure everybody gets a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, by Council Leahy, request city manager report to city council we've got a plan to reorganize the DPW in the Parks Department. Need a second? Thank you. As I said, Council Mercia, we don't, it's many years away, but at least...
Could we please have a copy of that, because I don't know what the action plan is for Boston?
It's quite large, and I only made a copy for myself, so what I'll do is I'll give...
Council, if you give that to us, we'll make sure everybody gets a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, by Council Leahy, request city manager report to city council, we've got a plan to reorganize the DPW and the Parks Department. Need a second?
Second.
By Council Noon.
Thank you, Leahy. Through you, the manager, if we could come up, now that we have some new players coming back, coming into positions that we needed to fill. So what I was wondering is, if you could take a good look at this, from the top all the way down to the bottom, and make some changes, you know, restructure what you think would work, get some input from people in the department, the new department heads, you know, ask everybody their opinion. What's working over there, what isn't working over there? If you need to reorganize, I know that, you know, we might have a general foreman's job, then it goes up to a supervisor, then it goes up to commissioner, whatever it is. Let's take a good look at it and see what's going to work and what isn't going to work. If you could incorporate in the plan maybe some benchmarks that we want to hit over the next three years, you know, where we want to be staffing-wise, production-wise, you know, what we want the city to look like, parks, streets, lands and buildings. So I think that would be very helpful. We want this, you know, we've all sat on the floor over the last year, you know, what's happening over there isn't really working. It needs to work. I had one other thought, I just lost my thought on that. But, you know, basically, hopefully, we're going to get a total restructure out of that. Even take a look at the salaries, you know, what are we paying, where do we need to be at certain levels? And then, you know, incorporate, again, some benchmarks. If people aren't cooperating and they're not happy to work there, then they get written up and, you know, hopefully they move along. But we want people who are there to be happy, and we want them to do their jobs. And we want everybody to be proud of the city that they work in. So I lay this on your shoulders. In 1999, you brought us, you made us the...
All-American city.
All-American city, so if you can do that, you can do this.
I'll accept the challenge.
Yes, well, so that's what I'm looking for in this, and I look forward to, you know, reports of progress and where we're going with this and what we need to do to back you up. Thank you.
Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. So, we're already looking at a reorganization of the way in which the DPW interacts with the school department and handles school maintenance issues. So I would think that this would also tie into that, right? The whole thing needs to be done in a pretty comprehensive way.
Yeah.
So, so that, when do you think we might get something on that?
I'm not sure. The new commissioner, I'll certainly wait for the new commissioner to come onboard, which will be in a few weeks.
Okay.
So we can get back to you. But, you know, we have been working to address how we're responding, as you point out, especially with regard to the schools, work orders, flow charts and so forth. And I will say, the acting commissioner, Christine Clancy, has been onboard and putting together a lot of information for us. So I think, you know, the recent efforts, as well as if we look at the Collins Center report, are things that we have. There's a lot to go on in order to address this, to make sure that all these departments are working to the best benefit of the people of the City of Lowell.
Okay, thank you.
I just thought of what I wanted to say, too, is, and I want departments to work together, you know? I know that we don't want people to take over other people's jobs, but I'll give you one example. A few years back, this is going back a few years, but there was a fence down on one side of a walkway, and the fence on the other side to the right was taken down by parks. And they took the fence down, they mulched the playground, they put the fence back up. They didn't tie the fence up on the left side because it wasn't their fence. And that's the stuff that needs to stop, you know? If you're out there and it's something small, just fix it while you're there. And these are the things that have to be incorporated, too, you know? Yeah, we don't want people crossing over the lines for everything, but if it's something very easy while you're there, you know, let's just do it. Thank you.
Next, a motion by Council Kennedy, request city manager instruct DPD to provide city council with a report regarding all pending and potential economic development projects going on in the city currently.
Second.
Second by Council Cirillo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no objection, I would, I think it's a good time to just take a look at this and what we have, you know, on the burners in terms of potential impending projects. But I also think that maybe it makes more sense to refer this to the Economic Development Subcommittee and have it, have a presentation before the Economic Development Subcommittee, before it comes back to the city council. So I would move in substitution that we send this motion to the Economic Development Subcommittee.
Second.
Second by Council Noon. Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll stay at the podium. Just a simple request, but then by myself, request city manager have proper department look at the installation of a bus shelter at the LRTA stop on Broadway Street in Lowell Senior Center.
Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, you know, whether it's under the LRTA or the city, but there is an area where a lot of seniors do take the bus from that, and to have a shelter area for wind and rain would be proper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is a wonderful motion, and we did look at it many, many times. And the fact remains that these shelters are so darn wide, that if you put it on the sidewalk, people will have to walk into the street, so it was impossible to do that. In order to put a shelter there, we would have had to put it on senior center property. Therefore, it was taken two and a half spaces, and we were losing it. So that's why we don't have a shelter there. I don't know...
Could it be just at least a roof or something like that?
I think if they could just cut it down to some size, instead of being so monstrous, just enough to the length of a bench and put a shelter over the bench type thing. It should be specially designed, because the regular standard size is just too big, and that's the only reason, but you're absolutely right. There should be something there. So that's the issue.
Council Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What if there was just a roof that went over the sidewalk?
Yeah, that would be...
So that you'd still be able to use the sidewalk, but there'd be a covering and then...
Yeah, that would be great.
And roof, if, if...
Something should be there.
Have to go at least, say, 10 to 15 feet to have some merit to it, and that would work.
I wonder if we have any land and buildings that could build something. That would be great. Because they really need one there. You're right.
Thank you. Next, we have, I need a motion to go into executive session regarding the manner of litigation, Amy Hoot et al. versus the City of Lowell, public discussion of which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position. Need a motion by Council Cirillo, second by Council Milonazzo. Roll call? We'll also leave from executive session. Need a roll call?
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras? Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Milonazzo?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Well said. Thank you, too late.